Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Wareham Planning Board, Monday, March 25, 2024. Also available on Zoom at the address noted at the top of the agenda, which was posted with the clerk and to the website. We will start the meeting, the order, with the roll call. Sherri Kirk.
Here.
Mike Deputis.
Here.
Jane Gleason.
Here.
Sam Corbett.
Chair.
Carl Schultz.
Here.
And Chair Michael King is here. We have a full board. To begin with preliminary business, meeting minutes. Has the board had an opportunity to read the meeting minutes that was forwarded?
I did, and I found in the March 4 one, there are three instances where Wareham was transcribed as William. We need to change. The William redevelopment authority.
You've got something against William?
Nothing against.
So we can consider that a Scrivener's error?
Yes.
Any other notations?
Yes, I have several.
Okay.
Regarding Scrivener's error, Mrs. Scrivener's, I note that my name is spelled inconsistently, most often incorrectly. So I'll work with the, and that, I'll work with the minutetaker and get that straight. It's not a good deal. Comments on 1218, 2023, this is a recommendation for improvement. There was a motion to deny at that meeting, I think of 0 Route 25, and the text of the motion was not included in the minutes. Rather, there was a phrase that said, "The motion was what was discussed at the meeting." I think it's very important that if we take a motion, and this is, again, a suggestion for our minutetaker, very helpful, to get the exact text of the motion recorded in the minutes. And I believe that we need to record the vote by name. So for motions going forward, so that's, I don't know that we need to go back, but I think it's important that we do that. And then the last recommendation for going forward is, there was a meeting or a notice circulated from the Select Board about open meeting law and requirements of minutes. We are required to list the documents reviewed and discussed at the meeting, and they should be, and as you noticed at the last couple of meetings, I've been trying to read them out, but we need to capture that information in the minutes. So that's a suggestion for going forward.
Okay.
Should be named if it's unanimous? Probably not. Well, as long as everybody's there.
Yeah.
Can you unmute yourself, please, Sam?
I'm sorry.
How about add impossible vote? You've been stuck a couple of times. If we're discussing something, it's a very impossible vote.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I think that would be helpful.
Good ad.
So those, I think that, by the way, I'm glad that we're getting minutes. I thought they were, they were well done, so.
Sherri, any comments or concerns on the minutes?
No, but I appreciate careful review by others and suggestions for making them better.
Mike?
Happy.
Mr. Chair, I offer the motion to, and I think the last go-around from Robert's Rules of Order say, "We approve the minutes." That was how I read the last email. I move that we approve the minutes of December 11, 2023, December 18, 2023, and March 4, 2024, as amended, the March 4 minutes were amended.
For the Scrivener error?
Yeah, for the Scrivener error.
Can we have a motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett? All in favor? Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And Chair vote aye. Are you trying to create a little suspense there?
Well, no, he hasn't been, for a while, approving them. He's been...
I've had enough.
Okay, aside from the meeting minutes.
Wait, before we move on, Mr. Chair, regarding meeting minutes, this is not specific to the minutes, but it was brought to my attention by reading the minutes of December 18. I would like to add an item under Other Business, not considered to discuss, the Andrade subdivision, and I forget the number, I've got the number buried somewhere, 2021...
I got it right here. Maybe not.
All right, I'll have it by the time I get here, but I have, I have some observations on that subdivision plan.
Okay.
And it was brought to my attention based on the minutes.
Okay. First up, 37-21 Tibia Lane, Christian E. Tibia, two lot subdivision, extension request. Do we have someone here to speak to that?
Hi, how are you? My name's Christian Tibia. I'm the owner of the property.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm here looking to request a, effectively get a six-month extension on the subdivision plan for Tibia Way. It expired, it just expired last month, February 22. It was due to just, I had personal reasons for the past several years, personal matters that I had to attend to, and then when I recently was going to move forward, I just rea, realized that it had expired. So what I'm looking for is just for a six-month extension, so I can get things started again.
So the six months is just so that we can stop...
Correct.
...claring and whatnot?
Yes, correct.
Okay. If I'm not mistaken, the way the bylaw is written, it's substantial construction?
Has to have begun, yeah.
Has, yeah, okay.
But it hasn't. So, I mean, you have done nothing, yes?
No.
So you need an extension.
Correct. So some, look at the six months.
I think the issue before us is, he missed the deadline for, I'm just saying out loud that we're not...
No.
Missed the deadline for...
For the request.
For the request. We had one similar situation this summer, and if we discuss the Andrade project, so it'll have a bearing, how we deliberate on this will have a bearing, those two have a bearing on it. But in my opinion, I think it's our discretion, if it's this close, to extend.
Yeah, I guess my question would be, do we have the discretion? Because I was looking over some various case law on some various things, not being a Massachusetts lawyer, I might add, but I would raise the question whether if an extension isn't applied for within the time, we can extend it.
That's, okay, I thought it was in the subdivision rules and regs where we specified it, and I thought we had some discussion, I didn't look at case law, of course.
Yeah, well, you know...
So the question then, is Mr. Buckland on the, so I believe, through the chair, I believe Mr. Buckland is still...
Yes, I am.
The person, the planning director to whom we go?
There is no permit right now to extend.
Huh?
There is no permit to extending. It's expired.
Well, okay, so the question is, can we extend it if it has expired?
Do we have the, do we have the authority to extend something that's already expired?
Right.
Right.
That's my question.
So that was my question to the, the planning office.
Regulations, you waive the standards of the rules and regs. So you can, this is why the rules and regulations are more helpful and, and there's more flexibility for the board to make decisions that are helpful in, in your work, since there's no particular reason to go over this subdivision again, since it's still, all the, the status of the, of the property remains the same, and there's no other issues that have turned up in the meantime. So the, there'd be no particular good reason to go through the whole process again.
How does this impact the board's position? Should we take a vote and it fails with 27 charge pond and 150 tohaunit? They're looking for extensions. Does this set a precedent that puts us...
That's not under the rules and regulations, that's under, there's only bylaw that, at this point, the zoning and any modification of that requires a variance from the Board of Appeals.
And they, they applied for that within the time limit, didn't they?
Did they, we start this? It's been going on for so long, I forgot.
They did.
No, they met the...
Within the time limit. So, animal, I think.
Yeah, Jane's point is well taken, that they applied within the timeframe for applying for an extension, and I think our deliberations, our very long deliberations on this subject have related to questions about how much things have changed and what we need to be looking at in order to feel comfortable granting that extension. If there were similar circumstances here, we might decide the same thing.
Yeah.
So again, on the discussion, if we are, were to grant an extension that missed the deadline in this case, how would that impact?
Future?
Future. We would have to be very clear as to what would differentiate this case from any future case.
You know, I think sometimes lawyers include language saying, "This is not a precedent for future cases," and, and I think it would be possible to do that here, and if, if this were, I mean, in order to be in similar circumstances, for example, a solar developer would have to miss the deadline for beginning construction under their special permit, not do anything for a while, and then come back to us and say, you know, "We, we forgot," or "We were unable to proceed," and, you know, I think we would say this was a special case and has no relevance or application.
So this is only a subdivision, right? It's not a special permit?
It's just a subdivision.
So it's subject to our rules and regulations, notwithstanding what you found with case law. Do you want to make reference to that, or do you think it's...
I, you know, I think that's relevant. That, that would be, you know, that would be valid to reference, I think.
So is it your opinion, contrary to the advice we got from Planning Office, that we should be concerned about mass general law?
I mean, if...
Not as a lawyer practicing.
Yeah, I know. What I would say is, we could be very cautious and ask town council about this, and it's a question of whether the board feels as if that level of caution is warranted here.
So I'm going to be pedantic, pedantic again, and point out another gap by not having access to town council at a judicary meeting. I can say that word, adjudicatory meeting. So I don't know that we need to go to town council unless, in my opinion, I don't, I don't know that we're, I don't know how we're going to vote, but I'm not sure that this is going to cause that much of a stir.
I'm worried about precedent being set, because we have others coming before us with the same situation.
Does one month turn into six, turn into a year? Where, where does the timeline end? That would be the only concern of mine.
That's, that's a valid concern.
I mean, as far as, as far as the, the intent of it, I think it's harmless enough. You know, I mean, health issues stopped him from getting what he needed to get done, done, and he missed the deadline, but the part, like I said, the part that I'm a little concerned about is just the setting a, kind of kicking open the barn door and not sure what's going to come through it after the fact.
I agree. What is, what's the timeframe? One month, one year, two months? What makes it different? I mean, we've got two ends of the cycle, the spectrum, right now, but in the future, we're going to have some more that are 60 days or 70 days. Is there a cutoff?
I think that we should, we should ask for an opinion from town council as to where our authority is in this. Do we actually have the authority to do it?
And should we do it?
And should we do it?
Their timeframe is a question that should be asked. Does it make a difference if it's a month or a year?
Well, that's, that's just it, because somebody will come before us and they'll use this decision, should we approve it, and say, hey...
Exactly.
What's the difference? A month, a year, two years, five years? You know, where's, where is it in, in your rules and regs that says, "This is the hard line, this is the cutoff?"
The cutoff is actually the date of the project.
So I think it would be, it would be in our best interest just to, to get some clarification from, from council, someone that is a lawyer in Massachusetts.
Mr. Chair, then I move that we defer consideration of this request pending advice of council, and I further move that we authorize the Chair, under the Select Board policy, to meet with town council, and that meets a majority vote of the board.
Second.
I have a motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett. All in favor? Is this administrative?
I think it is.
So I think, I think so too. So Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. So this is not to say we're not going to say yes. This is, you know, pretty much just making sure that we're saying yes with the correct authority. So I'll make...
Not against the project.
Yeah. Yeah, no, in today's society, we're just going to make sure we do everything correctly. Shouldn't take long to, I'll, I'll make arrangements, now that the, the board has voted to authorize time with town council, I'll make arrangements to see, see him this week. He's usually in on Thursdays, or has that changed?
I'm not quite sure, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I know last week, I think it was Wednesday, so, but anyway, I'll get time on his calendar. We'll get, we'll get some clarification and then get it back in front of the board for our...
Or, what is the eighth? You don't have your calendar.
I don't have my calendar in front of me, I left it at the house.
What does the eighth look like, Ms. Repose?
Um, we have quite a bit off for the agenda on the, you're talking about Planning Board?
Yeah.
It's a busy...
But we could, we could fit, do you think we could fit this in?
Oh, yeah, preliminary business, yeah.
Yeah, we would put this at the front of the list, so you don't have to sit here all night waiting.
We have four, ten nights.
Yeah?
I'm sorry, what's the date?
April 8.
April 8?
Yep.
Okay.
And hopefully you can end it that night.
Okay.
Yeah, if we can get some clarity from town council, then we'll know for sure.
Okay, sounds great.
Okay.
All right.
We'll talk to you then.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
We have order, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Before we move on to the next agenda item, this discussion raises the question, I don't remember when the last time we discussed it, there are several open subdivision, approved subdivision plans that may not have progressed to the point, we were supposed to get a list and discuss that. I think we should, did, do you remember what I'm talking about?
Exactly.
There are subdivisions, I think...
That run the risk of going past the two years?
Right. And I, we should make sure that somebody lets them know, so...
Yeah, so they don't suffer the same...
Right.
...pains that this gentleman is.
Should that be our responsibility?
Let's see, how?
Well, it, it, other than it's good citizens of the community, we should encourage...
Well, yeah, but I don't think it's the board's responsibility to assemble the list.
No, no, I didn't, no, no, I didn't mean that. We had made a request, and I could go back and find it, of the Planning Office to assemble that list.
Okay.
Mr. Buckland, through the chair to Mr. Buckland, do you remember this discussion?
Actually, Carl, I don't remember this discussion.
Okay, I'll go back and find it in the minutes, but even if it wasn't, I think we should, we should kind of get an idea if there's anybody at risk.
I think that's a good idea, anyway.
Okay.
Can you assist with that?
Uh, yeah, I can, in my spare, in my spare time.
I, I understand.
Okay.
So if the note taker could create an open item in the minutes so that we can actually track back to it.
Mm-hmm. Next up is Michael and Leanna Dancy, 2 Seahorse Lane, A&R Preliminary Review.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
So this being under preliminary review, I'm Attorney Jillian Morton, 184 Main Street. Before you, you have a plan, which you saw last year, the end of last year, and this is to enforce Seahorse Lane. So what we've done here, and I rewatched the other hearing, and your, a concern of yours was that the road, you know, that Seahorse Lane, and so we went back and forth to try to figure out what would work here. So what we've asked in this preliminary review, for you to take a look at the, the road, and what we've done is widen it to 20 feet. Right now it's eight to 10. And if this is fine with the Planning Board, then we need to go through conservation, have them approve it, it's already in that progress, and then once we have their approval, we do the work, and then we can come back to you with the A&R. If you recall, the whole A&R was just a, a land piece.
Yes.
So...
There were, I think we gave you four requirements.
Four requirements.
For the road.
Okay.
I can read them to you.
Sure, sure.
Hard surface, travel, travelable by the fire department.
Mm-hmm. That's a funny feat.
So it has that one. No, no, that's the hard surface.
That's the construction on the...
I'm going to get to the way... Okay. The NFPA estimate from the fire department, which are 20 feet, 20 feet width, minimum grade of between 0.5 and 1%, and a depth of the base material between eight and 10 inches. Those were the, the requirements for the roadway to be an accepted way.
Okay.
We provided that standard to the engineer who was here.
Yeah.
And Mr. Cudaro helped us with that, so...
Excellent. Yeah, yeah.
So that...
I reached out to, to Ken before he left and CC'd Phil, because I know there's some discussion, do we bring Phil in? This isn't a site plan review, but how do we handle that? So you guys have, those are the four requirements.
It was, yeah, that was what we said we felt needed to be done to the roadway. And then the only thing I would add, if, in discussion of your approach, is maybe we don't have Phil go do an inspection, but if you get the fire department to come out and just say, "Yes, we can, we can drive our truck down this road."
Okay.
That would be a suggestion. I mean, we're just discussing.
I think it's a good suggestion.
Was it already motion?
Huh?
Was it already motion in the last meeting?
No, they withdrew their application. They did an A&R.
Mm-hmm.
We said, "We don't think we can take Seahorse Lane as an accepted way." They said, "What does it need to be to be an accepted way?" We gave them those four, four requirements and said, "If you do this, it could, it could be an accepted way."
Right.
And that's where I think we left it. And they went off to do what I think they did, which is, "What if we do this?"
Yeah. Yeah, so like I said, we're in front of conservation next week, and then we wouldn't actually come back to you with that A&R until that work is completed, until that road is correct. So, you know, this is a plan we have here, but we'll obviously be updating that plan. And I think it's a good idea, we'll talk to Mr. Smith and, and get a, information regarding the fire truck.
Yeah, I mean, they, they all often issue us a letter saying, "Yes, we've looked at the road and it's good by us."
Yeah.
That would be my other suggestion.
Okay.
I looked at the plan, I think it meets those four requirements, but I was trying to look at it online, so...
Our engineer should be online, Mr. DeVignan. It's a Samsung, it should be Samsung Galaxy 51. Do you see that? Yeah.
Can we get some chairs?
Huh?
Can we get some chairs?
He's unmuted?
I have that one here.
Okay.
If there's not enough chairs, we have a problem.
We still got chairs open, yeah. Till the chairs are full, we don't have an issue.
So our engineer's here too, if there's any specific questions, I think getting let in right now? Okay.
So you're, you're going to go before conservation and get their blessing?
We've actually gone and had one hearing in front of them. They have asked for, and Dave can answer this better than I, I think dry wells, you know, the drainage, the normal stuff that they require, and we said we were coming in front of you to take a look at this, a preliminary, and then next week, we actually are seeing them, so...
But you said they were asking for dry, dry wells and all that?
Dry wells.
Where's all that?
That's not on this plan. We just updated it.
So, okay, so...
This isn't the plan we're submitting for an A&R. This is just to give you a look at the road and stuff, because we have to file a whole new applica, A&R application with you.
So you're basically just looking for an unofficial approval of, "This is what we think we can do," and is that going to fly?
Yeah, feedback from the board. That's what Ken had said, "What might be a smart thing to do." Obviously, there's a lot of money that goes into widening the road and handling all that, so we just want to make sure we're on the right track.
Mr. Chair, through you to the applicant's engineer, I didn't catch his name.
Uh, Dave DeVignan.
Mr. DeVignan, did you hear the four requirements that I listed earlier?
Yes, sir. For the record, Dave DeVignan from Schneider DeVignan, Camione. I heard hard surface, 20-foot width, minimum 0.5% to 1% slope of road. What was the fourth one?
Um, that was the base, the eight to 10-inch compacted base.
Oh, okay, all right. So I'm glad you brought that forward so that we can talk about that. What does the board mean by hard surface? We have a processed gravel proposed, four inches in thickness on top of a 12-inch minimum road binding gravel base. So we're proposing the prop, the base that was one of your requirements. The road, centerline of the road, does meet the 1%, actually a half a percent, it's more closer to 1%. We are proposing 20 feet wide. Is a graded gravel surface adequate? When you say hard surface, or is that a fire chief determination?
Ultimately, it would be the fire chief, but through you to Mr. Cudaro, who I was quoting, would, in your opinion, if you'd offer it, is that meet a hard surface requirement?
It can't.
Thank you. I would have said yes, but ultimately, it's going to be the fire chief who lets us know.
Yeah.
Okay, and then there was one other thing I'd like to get the board's take on. We initially drew the plan where the road would end 25 feet past the common property line of our client and the, the only other property serviced by the road, and it has been conveyed to us that the budding property owner, who is actually conveying this parcel of land to our client, would like the road to end at the common property line. So we had prepared a second plan, we, we put bold letters above the title block, "Alternative Roadway," which is a shorter version, and I wanted to know what the board's thoughts were on that. And the reason I say that, before you answer, I, I'd like to just give you a very quick rundown. We do have border health approval for the, the alternative technology septic system design. We've been before the Conservation Commission two, at least two times. They're okay with the plan. We purposely delayed the public hearing on purpose so that we can get input from the Planning Board, because we don't want to close the public hearing until we know... until we know how long of a road we're building. And, and so that we can then go back to them and close out that public hearing process and get the approval, which I fully anticipate at the next meeting, once we have the solid direction from, from the planning board.
Is there any?
I always have an opinion.
Yeah, well, my, the first thing in my head is, is there, is there a zoning bylaw that states that the road has to go past the property line?
Well, the road is the road. The road doesn't, is irrespective of property lines. So to be, even though it's a private way, the road has to, the entire road, in my opinion, has to meet the requirement.
I don't think that's what he's asking, though. If you look, if you look.
That's what I.
If you look at the two different sets of plans, one has the road ending here, one has the road ending here at the property line.
One, I think the road needs to go to Kermit's Way.
Oh, it does?
It begins at Kermit's Way, and we're proposing to improve it to 20 feet. If the neighbor, if we did what the neighbor wanted, it would be a distance of about 105 feet from the gutter line of Kermit's Road end. And the difference being what the neighbor's asking and what we initially proposed is an additional 25 feet past the common property boundary.
But both properties have to be on an accepted way for the A&R to work. So if it doesn't go to the second property.
Right, then the second.
I'm, I'm, this is, we're discussing.
Well, it makes sense, the second property now isn't technically on a.
An accepted way. And it's part of the A&R. Which, which property would be, both properties are subject to the A&R, right?
Yeah, so it's a, a piece of, you know, triangle piece, so I, I see what you're saying. I think we're trying to appease the abutter who doesn't want that improvement.
I don't know, it's.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I can see your point. If, if they're trying to accomplish the A&R, then both, both properties have to be on that accepted way.
And again, I understand why we're doing it. I understand this is a longstanding issue. I understand the applicant is going out of their way to try and meet this. I don't know what. Again, I would ask advice from planning office, what his thoughts would be. At least for the record, that would be mine.
My thoughts are that the, what you're discussing is what is typically discussed in a subdivision discussion and hearing as to what the road would look like and whether or not there'd be a turnaround at the end, or if, whether or not it's a dead-end road that the fire department needs to have a turnaround on. And it's not just for the A&R. It's for the road construction that you're looking at, what you typically look at in a subdivision process.
But they're trying to keep it not as a subdivision, but as an A&R. And they could do the road improvement with, can they do a road improvement, like they're discussing, without making a subdivision?
They, they can make the road improvement, yes, and, and not have a, and not have a subdivision. They could go out and do it themselves and.
Yeah.
And ask for the access to be considered appropriate.
That's, that's what I thought they were doing.
What you did was, what you did was right, it was correct, it was possible, but the details you're talking about now and the, and the extension of the road are really part of a subdivision discussion.
Let's, can I phrase my question more simply? If they came before us and Seahorse Lane ended at the property line, would we still have the same concerns about frontage on an accepted way? For the second property?
If the second property has the road in front of it, with the frontage that you consider a width, proper width grade in construction, then it's, it can be subdivided in that, in that manner.
And right now, it's not.
And the plan they, they're proposing will not have that?
Then it doesn't meet the requirements for an A&R.
Which is, which is sort of the circular argument that I was making.
Meaning comparative, it goes to the, oh, go ahead, Dave.
The abutting lot owned by the Gully family, they do have frontage, 52 feet of frontage on Kermit's Road.
Then that, that, that would solve the problem, then, I think. They would have adequate frontage on an accepted way, then.
They do right now.
Yes, so that, that may solve our problem. Doesn't have to be on, I thought that they had front, only frontage on Seahorse Lane. I, I can't see the plan. So if they have frontage on an accepted way, Kermit's, that may solve the problem.
That's correct.
Doesn't say it has to be on Seahorse Lane.
Right, just has to be on an accepted way.
Seems to me like that solves the problem. I'm open to the rest of the board. You satisfied me, that, I'm not.
Does that satisfy the abutting landowner as well?
Yeah, not extending the road the full way.
Okay.
I think also, and maybe Josh can speak to this, I wasn't at the conservation hearing, but that's closer to the water as well, so it'd be disturbing. You know, closer to the wetlands, I'm not sure if it's near any of the buffer zone or anything, if we had to do that part of the road as well. So conservation's seen this, and I don't think that they've had a problem with it.
Yeah, according to the plans, that you would be, you'd be entering the bordering vegetated wetlands.
If we finish out the road, yeah. Is that correct? Through the chair to Josh.
It looks like the proposed plan that you have would not encroach on the 30-foot no-activity zone of the bordering vegetated wetlands. It looks like the, the road ends at 36 feet. That's what the, that's the original proposal. The alternative proposal, just an estimation, is probably more like 50 or 60 feet.
Josh is correct. It's dimensioned as 36 feet from wetlands to the end of a longer road, and if we eliminate, and we stop at the property line, we're at least 60 feet away. So it's an improvement from a conservation standpoint.
Mr. Chairman, I think you have to consider, though, that the fire department may want a request for a better turnaround at the end.
Well, I mean, that would be even more invasive than just extending the road.
And we really couldn't do that without creating easements on the abutting property. The layout, it's simply a straight shot layout, 35 feet wide to the water's edge. So there's really, there is no layout for the potential of a, of some sort of hammerhead turnaround. And I, I would just like to point out that, you know, building out 100 feet of 20-foot-wide roadway would, would be a significant improvement to the existing conditions, which have been in place for, oh, I think, my lifetime and then some.
We do have Captain Smith here. If you would be willing to let him speak.
Mr. Chair, if the applicant just complies with NFPA 1, Chapter 18, 100 feet is, does not require the turnaround. 150 feet requires the turnaround. So as long as they comply with NFPA 1, we'll be fine with it. If that's helpful to the applicant.
Okay.
And really, the only thing in here is the 20-foot wide.
Right.
That you guys already mentioned.
In the construction.
In the construction of the road. So if the applicant wants to call me tomorrow, be in my office from 7 to 9. We can work that out, and I'll get him a letter.
Sounds good, thank you.
Captain Smith, could you identify yourself for the minute taker?
Yep, Captain Smith, Captain Chris Smith, Wayham Fire.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
A hard time reading this. What is this? I can't find it identified anywhere, so I don't know what it is.
I think the engineer might want to weigh in on that. There's a property line that's in board, the property line at Kermit's Road. Perhaps Mr. DeVignan could weigh in on.
If you could, if you're looking at the, the plans, to the left of the, the very bold property line on Kermit's Road, there's a, there's a dotted line that runs where the, where the thing is.
There's the north.
Oh, there it is, so it runs northwest. Can you, can you explain what that is?
Oh, the bold dotted line that it sort of meanders like a snake through Kermit's Road?
No, no, not through Kermit's Road. This runs from, this runs from Seahorse Lane. It's identified in north 2158, 28, by west 5048. Can you explain what that line is? Because I can't, I don't see anything that indicates its purpose. I'm just trying to figure out what it is.
I'm still trying to find exactly what you're pointing out. In Seahorse Lane?
What's this?
Dave, if you look just to the left of the proposed structure, it's the dash line, thin dash line in between the house and the septic.
Yes, oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Cut an elevation?
That, that dash line represents the current property line. And that, to the left or west of that, between that dotted line and that bearing a distance and the bold line of Kermit's Road, that is the parcel that the Gully family is willing to transfer over to our clients so that we can put the septic system in that location.
Okay, and does it run, I mean, looking at it, it runs the full width of the property north?
Yeah, yes, it does.
So if, if that's a, a new property line, then how does the existing single-family have frontage on Kermit's Road? Because it looks like it takes that access away.
The Gully family owns, if you look to the north of this property, they own the additional 52.2 feet of frontage to the north of our property boundary. They have an L-shaped piece.
That's not going to be transferred, so they'll still have that frontage?
Yes.
Just where the septic is?
And currently, when you look at the assessors map, this parcel they're going to convey doesn't show up on the assessors map due to some errors. And our survey discovered that there's a strip here that our client just simply doesn't own. So they're, that's why the, the Gullies are willing to transfer this over. They, on the assessors map, currently, if you were to look, they, they still have that 52.2 feet of frontage on Kermit's that will not change. They have an L-shaped lot around our client's lot. And this is somewhat of a, a dead space, if you will. A useless piece for them, very helpful for our clients, they have.
Mm-hmm, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions? Mr. Carl? Yeah. What, I think what confused me is it starts out as a fairly bold dash and then transitions to a very fine dash, and I just, I thought it went all the way through and cut that 52 feet off the end. Chair?
No more questions.
Mike?
Nope, someone else.
Okay, Jane, you're gonna recuse yourself?
Carl? As I said, I think the applicant has met our ask with this plan. It's a very busy plan, as you said. To me, it looks like the second property now has frontage on Kermit's, but it doesn't, so. As I said.
We can, I mean, I think Dave could make a correction on that if, it's, it's helpful to see. Dave, did you hear that, where the dotted line is?
Well, the A&R will be a lot, the A&R plan's a lot clearer than this. It takes off all that other.
This is for the septic, for water help.
Necessary information for the planning board to look at.
Yeah, oh, if you come to us with just a simple.
Lot A.
Yeah.
Lot A, Lot B.
Got it.
Right, with frontage, with the road, yeah.
Got it.
It'll be much easier for us to.
Okay.
But I, the answer to the chair's question is, I think they met our ask, and they've done a, I think they've done a nice thing here.
I agree.
Well, and I have to say, it's very helpful for A&Rs like this that aren't just a simple, you know, land swap, and they're complex, that you should have the applicants do a preliminary so you guys can at least see what's going on, so we appreciate that. All right?
Thank you, Tita.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you, yeah.
Okay, continued public hearings. 12-23, 370 County Road LLC, Site Plan Review and Special Permit, 370 County Road.
This is the solar project, right? That's the cluster. Is this a new, a new piece of information today?
Ms. Sonia said all this stuff came in two weeks ago, March 6.
All right, just, Mr. Chair, you hand it out. I think for the record, we'll just read in. A letter dated, or not a letter, a package dated March 6, 2024. Responses to Mr. Cudaro and revised plans in response to the result of the test pits. So it's a cover letter and a plan set dated, prepared by Prime Engineering. And.
Carl?
Oh, revised March 6, 2024. Big black letters, I couldn't see, I'm looking at all the little print. I missed the big letters completely. So for the record, we have accepted.
All right, everyone has all their paperwork. Attorney Jillian Morton, again, 184 Main Street, here representing 370 County Road LLC.
In retreat, I'm Prime Engineering.
And I believe also the principal, Eric Chrisler, is on Zoom. Do you want to? All right. Want to go through any revisions? So where you're at is you see our revisions now. I'm not sure if, we sent those a couple of weeks ago, if Phil had responded to those. I know that, like, in a document, I know that you spoke to, to Phil about it, and he can speak to that things were all set on his end, but maybe if you want to bring him up there. Because I'm just unclear, I didn't receive any package from him.
Let me see. Phil, could you come up?
Good evening, Phil Cudaro from Allen &amp; Major Associates.
Okay, did I miss something? Because I don't see the, your review posted to the website.
So I can't speak to posting to the website, but we did issue a letter dated March 20, which reviewed and commented on the revisions that were contained within the March 6 materials from Prime Engineering.
I do think we got an email on that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember. Yeah, I don't remember. I could have read it.
It was at the end of this past week.
Yeah.
I reviewed it.
Okay. Would you be kind enough to just give us a quick overview of that?
Certainly can. So at this point, given the responses that were provided by Prime Engineering relative to test pits and modifications to the plans, they had addressed all of the technical comments that we had raised on the application. We did leave one comment open that we did not see a final certification from the Wareham Fire Department, that they were comfortable with the plans as proposed. And we would want to see that material submitted for the record before closing, before this board closed the hearing. And we also, we don't know the status. We issued our letter on March 20th. We do not believe the Wareham Conservation Commission had acted on the application at this point.
Okay. I did find your letter.
But otherwise, we didn't have any other outstanding comments for them. Their test pits came back appropriate for the site. They were detailed. They answered the questions that they needed to. All of the drainage calculations were revised accordingly.
So aside from the fire department, no outstanding concerns?
Other than the acting from the Conservation Commission, that they need to still act on the application.
They are continuing to our next hearing.
They are?
Next week, yes.
Mr. Sam?
My concerns actually came up from the meeting we had with the state on the makepeace property. We have proposed Ferringill. We have Squirrel Island. We've got this development, this solar array, the development, the other development. The entire area is affected. It's not just one or two. The entire area is changed. It's not open any longer. And I'd like some comment from the state on if there's, they addressed it with the makepeace property. This is a different owner. It's smaller. But I don't know if there's something the state regges that says there's too many in this one area, because that's what they're saying with Tyhonet.
So like, one development after another?
Oh, that's what they brought up. That's where this information came from. They said, there's one here, there's one here, there's one here, there's one here.
And as a result, you've got a huge track.
They said, you're changing the entire demographics of the forest, the land, everything. And I don't know if that applies. It's different, a different owner. I don't know if there's some sort of proximity limitation. But they brought it up at the meeting we had at North Wareham Solar Array. That's my main concern. As Carl said in his letter, it changes everything. It's basically-
Eric's letter. It was Eric's letter.
Yes, Eric. I'm sorry. So that's my main concern among others.
Jerry?
So, on one hand, you know, the size of these two projects is much smaller than what we've been looking at in this particular area. And we're confined and no batteries, which you know that we have deliberated over. And that all speaks, you know, favorably for going forward with this. But I think the point that you make, Sam, is I would describe it like this. The state, not necessarily focused on this project, but on the entire area, which this is, you know, pretty close to, has said, we think this all needs to be studied together and that the impacts need to be evaluated together because there is so much. And so I'm asking myself, I think, the same question you are, which is, how does this fit in? And, you know, what do we need to do here in order to be consistent with, you know, with what we're seeing as development of the entire area? And, you know, I think, I guess I would appreciate more input on that. I think that would be helpful.
Do we approach the state for that? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
So basically the same kind of review that they did for the proposed makepeace?
Right.
So, Mr. Chair, through you to Sam, or Sherry, will this fall, does this require a MEPO review?
No.
No, it's too small for a MEPO review. Which would be another way for us to get some of that kind of impact analysis, right?
Yeah. I think it would be good to, you know, seek some additional sources of state or federal expertise on this.
Basically, the state, they had a tour of the property. Basically, they said, there's too much for this one area. That's what I'm concerned here. There's two more projects coming before us and who knows what's after that. And basically, this came from a meeting with the state. They said, there's too much. They said pine berrons are an issue. It was an issue with just this one, this one, but now-
Collectively-
They're adding another 55 acres to that one that's already there. They're proposing another one. So they said, you're changing the entire habitat. You're taking down too many trees. We need to look at, the state said, we need to look at it further to make a determination if this is okay to do.
Through you to the applicant. Did you, I'm still trying to go through your applicant. There's an impact statement in here?
Yes, there's an impact statement.
I've got to go back and, I read it back a while ago. So, did it address ancient ways? And did it address habitat for species?
You did include that.
I've got to go back and reread. I'm just asking, I'm not saying it did-
That it's the farm, that the owner. You know, she's on board with everything and moving forward.
That, this is, she's not a species. Well, she is, but she's not a species.
You know, she's the owner of the property and she wants to keep, it's an important thing. So then there's a balance on these smaller projects for you. You only have a certain timeframe between-
That's not addressing this question.
I'm just asking if you're, I've got to go back and reread it. Did it address ancient ways? Did it address impact on species, either endangered or, because this is a habitat area. So as long as, I've got to go back and reread your app. I'm only asking if it's in there. If you said it's in there, I'll go back and read it. I'm not-
That was addressed at the meeting, basically, a list of species, where did they go? And their point was, I'm not talking about this right here.
Yeah.
But their question in general was, it's too much an impact on the environment, the water, the animals, terrapins, you know, and everything else. And basically, I'm concerned that this and the next one and the next one-
Plus, we have the subdivision.
Exactly. And if Ferringill happens, it's right across the street. Or down the street.
Could I ask which agency, which state agency made that opinion?
I'm sorry.
Could you tell me what agency, what state agency made the opinion that-
I don't have the information with me. What happened is makepeace had a proposed 55-acre solar array. If you go over 50, it triggers a study by the state. And a very cold day, there were probably 30, 40 of us there with this, two state agencies and the representative of the landowner. And the state said, we have to investigate this because we believe there's too much here. And it was, the 55 acres was what started the whole process. Because, not to go too far, but they had an array here, a very large solar array. Haven proposed here. They're filling 55 acres between the two. And they were proposing another one. There are already two more across the street and it's coupling Carver that are in the same vicinity. And they basically said, wow, it's too much. And that's my concern with this entire area, that there's already solar arrays there. There are solar arrays, they're proposed going through the court system. There's a development and a second development. That's just before us right now. God knows what's coming down the road. We have, some nights we'll have three or four of these proposed and oh my God, there goes another night of 10 o'clock at night with a room full of people are concerned. So that's my main concern. I'm not going to go on and on, but that's my main concern.
Chuck? Mr. Chair, back to the applicant. Regarding my questions, I'll refer you not to the state requirement, but to our bylaw requirements. And I've got to go back, as I said, and read your plan again. But I refer you to 593.12, which is an assessment of the impact and the environment formatted in a before and after method so that it's easy to measure and understand the changes that the proposed solar, solar, photovoltaic installation will have on the property and the property of others. 593.13, an evaluation of the impact on the wildlife habitat and endangered species to determine potential harm to wildlife and habitat by the proposed installation. Sort of a separate note, 593.14, a line of site study. I didn't remember seeing that. 593.15, provide a historical and cultural heritage evaluation on the potential impact of the installation. So I don't remember seeing those in the, but I said if they're in there, I'll go back and look for them. So your opinion is they're in your, in your, your application meets a-
Probably not on heritage. We do discuss the fact that right now, there's, if you take a view from afar, there are a lot, a lot of trees, a lot of mature pines.
That's not a line of site study.
So we then are basically opening up a meadow that is good habitat.
I appreciate, you, these are very specific requirements that your plan needs. And you could say that in your plan. As long as they're included in the application plan, I'll read it and either be satisfied or not. But I'm asking if they're in there. And I don't remember seeing them.
Specifically in the plans, we show cross-section of how we're going to enhance the buffer that's being preserved.
It's got to be called out with these headings so that I can find it. That's my suggestion.
Yeah, okay.
Do you believe you've addressed it? As I said, I will-
We believe it's addressed, yes. I don't know if it's addressed section by section.
We're happy to supply, you know, additional information. Like I said, this went through the full review. But if that's something that needs to get laid out separately, I agree that that's something you should have.
And if you come back and say, just go look at this page, go look at this page, that would-
I think we should point it out for you.
Thank you. That's all I'm asking.
It's not a suggestion.
Well, it's a requirement by law.
It's not a suggestion.
And they don't have to do it. If I can't find it, then I have to-
You should be provided that information, obviously with opposition and things. We understand this has gone through the view. Phil has, you know, from his point of view, looked technically at this.
I don't know, Phil, would you have looked at those requirements? I don't-
No, I read it through the chair as part of the impact report. They have, quite frankly, some of the requirements are listed in their study, not all of them.
Okay. Here's the, here's the-
No, that's, I said, I've got it. I've read it. I just, we're coming close to where we're going to make findings and I want to make sure that-
There's information there to back up. Yep.
One way or the other.
One way or another. Got it.
And these are particular concern to some of the residents in the area. And I recognize that trying to fill out these applications based on the different zoning bylaws of every town you go to, it's a recognized challenge. And thank you for helping us figure it out.
Thank you.
So as far as the actual plan itself, there's nothing substantive that's changed?
You want to answer that?
We've made the detention basins larger. They're actually retention basins. So we're going to infiltrate 100% of the water.
That was called out in Phil's report.
Right.
Yeah, I saw that. Okay. So basically, what we're dealing with then is the habitat study, the-
Line of sight visibility.
Line of sight study, the, what else is there?
There were four. Impact on wildlife and habitat, line of sight, historical and cultural-
And cultural heritage.
Yeah.
So you're going to go back and address those?
Yes.
And I would suggest too, and if you give me your card, I will send this to you because it's very easy for me to do that. The findings that were made by the state on the makepeace properties, I think that's illuminating in the sense of what the state is looking at and concerned about. And we've talked about precedent earlier tonight. And the question is, what is the precedent for us of approving this piece of a larger picture that actually the Wareham Planning Board has also expressed concern about? So I should, well, the comments that we made will be in that packet as well.
Mike?
Nope. Right now at this time.
Jane?
I think the conversation has pretty well covered what I would see as concerns.
Yeah, I would have to agree. Okay, so obviously you have a little bit of homework. That's probably a fair amount of information to compile. So I'm going to think that the next scheduled meeting is probably not a good choice.
Yeah, and I think it's full anyway, so we can go out a month if you'd like.
Well, the next meeting is the 22nd, which is town meeting.
It's town meeting. So what's the first meeting in May? No, we were skipping April.
Great. So we're looking at second Monday in May would be the 13th.
And Mr. Chair, through you to the applicant. We appreciate, she's not, we appreciate solar applicants working with us on this. And if you get through in the time, you're going to be way ahead of some of the other solar projects, so.
No, we appreciate, I was just commenting about, you know, the seven-month deadline. And I think we're-
For the subdivision?
For the subdivision, yeah.
But that can come in independent.
Okay, okay. Just making sure we're all good.
Yeah, the subdivision is a separate-
Yep. So May 13th.
May 13th. So I would entertain-
Wait, this is a public hearing though.
Oh, that's right, too. Okay. Being a public hearing, is there anybody present that would like to comment on the project in front of us at the present time?
Eric Lentilla, 15 Squirrel Island Road, West Wareham. We're starting to see a developing problem in a town of Wareham where there are clusters of major side-by-side projects, intentional or not, being proposed for development where wide swaths of forest land will be cut down. This site, this area, at 370 County Road, which also should be considered hidden trails cluster development, the same area, is being overdeveloped. There already exists an adjacent solar project directly west and north of these proposed projects. And if these two projects are allowed to go through, would create an even larger area of deforested land. This area will also be cutting off a major wildlife corridor as well as attracting the natural flow of water that moves through this wild, this area, which includes the Kohacket Brook watershed. There are existing endangered and threatened animal species in this area. To name a few, fisher cats, box turtles, eastern rat snake, red-billy cooter, back terrapin, even otters have been spotted in this area. There are also deer, turkeys, fox, osprey in this area. And just east, there's a major blue heron rookery containing hundreds of nesting sites, as I said, just east of this area. These planned project sites may not be listed as a high habitat area by the state. But everyone who lives in this area knows full well that these species exist here. These species also depend on the natural flow of the existing water in the area. A brief statement from the Mass Audubon Society. If current trends of ground mount solar construction continues, we stand to lose more than 20,000 additional acres of the most valuable wildlife habitat in the state, including 9,000 acres in the globally rare pine barrens habitat of southeastern Massachusetts and another 9,000 acres in the western Massachusetts.
Mr. Chair, could you back up, Eric, and just start over again? You're referencing large swaths of land. I missed the beginning of that.
Of this?
Your statement, you said 30,000 acres, 9,000. I missed where you were starting.
This is from Mass- This is from Mass Audubon.
Okay.
And if current trends of ground-mounted solar construction continue, we stand to lose more than 20,000 additional acres of the most valuable wildlife habitat in the state, including 9,000 acres in the globally rare pine barrens habitat of southeastern Massachusetts, and another 9,000 in largely forested areas in central and western Massachusetts. When left intact and connected, these areas are habitat for most of the Commonwealth, 432 endangered, threatened, and special-concerned species. Connected forests also support our more common species and provide critical movement corridors for wide-ranging species. Conversion to ground-mounted solar, like other forms of development, drastically alters these natural communities, fragments the landscape, and interrupts wildlife movement patterns. All of these projects that exist and that are proposed for this area need to be carefully considered, how they will affect the natural environment, and even the neighboring residents who live there. We have already heard from several people now about additional traffic, how it will affect their lives. And why has there not been any mention of any archaeological study for this area? It is a known fact that Wareham had a concentration of indigenous people, mainly the Wapun-hon people, who lived in this area. There should be a required archaeological study permit issued for any large-scale project or development being proposed in the town of Wareham. There are zoning regulations and bylaws that should be enforced to protect our land and water interests. Smart development needs to be enacted so as to protect the health, safety, welfare, and any cultural or indigenous resources of the people of Wareham and its natural environments. Thank you.
Eric, did you forward a copy of that letter? Is that the one that we-
I will forward these tomorrow.
Yeah, please, so that they can be posted to the website.
No, he had a different one.
That was a different one.
This is similar but different.
Listening to you, I knew it read different, something was wrong.
My client has his hand up, Mr. Chrisler.
Okay, yeah, that's fine, Mr. Chrisler?
Yeah, thank you. Can you hear me?
We can.
Fantastic. First of all, thanks, thank you for-
If you, if you could formally introduce yourself-
I was just listening to that, and-
I'm sorry, could you formally introduce yourself for the record?
Eric Chrisler, Interro Energy.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so I just wanted to make sure that, or not make sure, but try to inquire about the, the conversation that seems to be afoot here, about the overall area, and, you know, how, how we're going to be able to come to a conclusion of the, of the, you know, after we provide the documents that are, that are actually being asked for, you know, that we're required to provide, what would be the, the step then to address the, the overall issue of, of the area being developed? I don't know if those documents really address this kind of overarching concern, and I wanted to see if there's a, if there's a mechanism in place for, for this.
Do you want me to answer? Okay, thank you for your concern. Well, as, as I think formally stated by Sam, and then kind of followed up on by Sherry, these documents are going to be part of the documentation that we're going to be looking for, both from you on the studies, and from, some input from the state as to whether or not there is a true concern, or a swath of development that's going to effectively deforest that part of town. So until we have the information from all sources, you know, there's, there is no, there is no path, until we get that and study it, and then move forward based on what we learn.
Okay, just curious whether we can assist with the state, or whether there's a state organization that, that will be addressing the, the issue.
Well, sure. Just, my thought is, I mean, you can address, I think, the, the issues that arise with your site, and I think we need to think about and address the question of the whole, and how it fits together, and the, the question of how we think it fits together, and what legal or factual findings that, as a planning board, we may want to make. But a helpful first step is for you all to address these questions on habitat, et cetera, on your property. And I guess I would ask Phil whether you believe that your firm would have the expertise to review material from the applicants and advise the, the board on, at least with respect to this property, but also looking at all the properties, whether, whether you would have the expertise to advise us on that.
So through the chair, we're not habitat experts. We are by familiarity, but not maybe to the level of detail that you might want here. I guess what I would do, though, is caution you, caution the board as you're ruminating on this application and the other ones, is he has to be reviewed, this application has to be reviewed in conjunction with the zoning bylaws that are here. I think the studies, the state studies that were discussed were because AD Makepeace triggered them based on the scale of the project, so you might be comparing an apples-to-oranges situation, and just be careful with that, that the habitat study that Makepeace would be required to produce at a state level is because it's greater than 50 acres of alteration, whereas this project does not, does not have that. I guess, I answered your question, but I, I trailed off into something else. I was doing some research on what AD Makepeace's decision was, and I thought it was pertinent to share that with you, with the board, so you could consider that. So, sorry, sorry I trailed off there.
Yeah, so, and your advice, your advice is that this, this project also has to be reviewed on its own, and I would agree with that. I think, though, as a board, we need to have an eye on everything that's going on in that area of the town, and satisfy ourselves that this application is different, distinguishable, et cetera, recognizing that whatever we do here has to be supported by the record, and has to be supported by findings and the law. And so it's, it's tricky. It's, it is, I withdraw the word tricky, it is complicated.
If I may, just one more bullet point. When you talk habitat, there are particular standards of review that are defined by the Wetlands Protection Act, that if you're altering certain areas of buffer zone, certain areas of specific resource areas, you have to conduct a habitat study. If areas of potential alteration are not on the protected estimated or risk species priority habitat maps produced by Natural Heritage, they don't warrant additional review.
Except we added that specifically in our bylaw.
That, that's correct, yes. You have, you have it specifically in your bylaw, so you are applying your judicious standards against it, as opposed to those that would otherwise exist within the act, or MEPA, or Natural Heritage Species.
Thank, thank you. Continue, I know we're still a public, continuing our deliberation, one of the things I think we have to consider, this is a special permit, and under the special permit, there are some broad, there's some broad language about health, safety, and, and welfare, which, honoring Mr. Hidero's advice, I don't know how far we can extend that to look at cumulative impact when we've got three special permits, at least three special permits, that are rebutting each other. And I know, I'm not sure how to, how to approach that, but that is a consideration that we have to factor. And I don't know how we're going to, how we do that, but that, we're aware of our obligation, we're aware, and we take it quite seriously.
Yeah, through the chair, I, you know, I don't envy you guys dealing with all the different projects, but I do know, you know, as an attorney, you have to look at the project in front of you, the standards, if this goes to court, you would, they would be looking at your bylaws, your requirements, what did you review, so whatever you want for this project, we're going to supply to you.
Thank you.
It's, it's definitely tricky, though, when you have other areas, you know, that are near.
And we have to be very clear in our findings, how we reach our conclusion, and we will, because we owe you that. We owe the town that, who we, you know.
I would reiterate that our, our charge is multifold, and two of them are, one, to look at the specific projects that come before us, and two is to be protective of the town as a whole. So we have to look at both those things, and you can't have one sort of negate the other. I would be very curious to hear if we could, or to find out who the, who the agencies were that were represented at that walk-through that you went to, Sam. And conversation with them, further conversation with them would be hopefully fruitful and helpful.
Thank you, Phil.
As always, your input is welcome.
If you're getting your steps in, you really should sit over there.
Some more company.
Anne?
Sam, I'm thinking, who speaks for Earth? Sam Corbett. Sherry, I think the old board does, and I really appreciate the letter that you wrote to MEPA before their, their review. I've got one of these brain maps, I don't know if I can read it, but bear with me, Annie Hayes Farmers Lane, 52 Farmers Lane. I think each of the projects that have been, we're looking at in this area, and the ones that exist, have their own detriment and issues that are really particular to them. And then there's the cumulative aspect of water drainage, water potability, effects of downwater, sea level rise, loss of upland forest. If you look at a map of Wareham, the upland forest is lost all through the community, we're, we're inundated. And I did have this map that I showed, the conservation. This is the quarry, this is the land that is the 37 or 40 acres with 50 houses, and then right here is the project on 370. And this is, I think, a 2021, so we've had the, the warmest winters ever consecutively since 2021, and you can see how blue it is with the various flooding. So, and then we, we use upland, you know, further north where the Makepeace projects are, but it's all throughout the town, and it seems as if developers are kind of like looking at the map and looking for the green spaces, and thinking, well, that's upland forest, I can build there, and I'll have 50 years, 30 years, who knows how long before the sea level rises predicted to be encroaching on that, and the saltwater intrusion from beneath the land. So our, our pristine water is not only being affected by all the towns above us as it comes through the aquifer, it's affected by all of the projects that are within our town. So one of the things that I, I've just jotted down a few things. One on this project is my concern, because it is solar, and I keep wanting to know more about that, and I'm learning more about it as I research, is the potential for the materials that are coating the panels, the anti-reflective, and the hydrophobic coatings, and their constituent chemistry, which, boy, when I read about it, and we're talking now about nanoparticles, I'm wondering how these basins are filtering what? You know, these are tiny, tiny, tiny particulates that are getting our attention now. We know there's PFAS that's been tested, I've spoken to Scott, who's the head of the pollution control, and there is PFAS evidenced in the, the tests that the, that have been mandated. And this whole issue of cumulative impact in certain areas, not just in southeastern Mass, but in the western part of the state, was very well documented in the recent Subcommittee at the state level, House and Senate, on citing and permitting utilities. And I got a call today from the Secretary of Representative Jeff Orr, and she said that she was going to work to make sure that I get the video that was done. There are a number of people from our community that testified, but it was statewide, and it was really astounding what the people are saying in the western part of the state, where the farmlands getting taken in massive amounts, and southeastern Mass. One last thing, in the Globe today, there was an article that there is extensive closure of shellfish beds in southeastern Mass. And we know that that's a problem that Wareham sees, and Marion sees, and all the towns down through Westport. And that's not just because of, I mean, it's, it's partly because of septic systems, but it's all of the accumulation that goes down, some of which we're, we're just learning how to even think about identifying. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne.
Mr. Chair, through you to Ms. Hayes, could you give us, submit a copy of the document you were referring to? Have we got that?
The audio, I mean, the visual?
No, the map, the map you held up.
Oh, yeah, you can have it.
Or send it to us, whatever.
Okay.
Yeah, just, to the planning office.
I sent, did you send it to Sherry? I hope that I got it.
Just send it to Sonia, and-
I'll send it to you.
No, no, please, send it, all documentation to the planning office.
Are you referring to the map or the mind map?
Yeah, the mind map, we're not going to be able to figure out.
You want my mind map?
I, I, you could send that to me, you could send me your mind map, I'll look at it.
I do have the ancient way trails to that map.
Thank you. Is there, yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Nancy McHale, Farring Hill Road, thank you. Prompted by a conversation or a comment that I had heard from the owner of this property, that she wanted to, wants to keep it a farm. This weekend, I attended the Massachusetts Land Trust Conference, which was held out in Amherst, and one of the seminars that I went to was funding with the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources, as well as other agencies and the federal government. One of the really interesting things that I learned there was that Endar, MDAR, considers solar panels, the ground under, the water, the stormwater management systems have to consider all of the acreage covered by the solar panels as impervious, not pervious, as other stormwater management systems have been doing. And I thought that was really an interesting distinction, that they are recognizing the fact that the water is sheeting off of these things at a much higher rate, and as it would off of any roof or building. And I just wanted to pass that along. I also wanted to pass along the fact that, as a member of the Wareham Land Trust, we are concerned about the loss of farms. We're concerned to see if there is anything that can be done to keep some of these farms in existence, and we're, we're trying to figure out what we can do to protect some of these habitats. And I would ask that, when you're doing habitat studies, to pay particular attention to the amphibians. They absorb everything through their skin and make them very-
the amphibians. They absorb everything through their skin and make them very, very vulnerable. And with so much water in this, so many wetlands in this area, it's, it's imperative that they look at the amphibians. Okay? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, through you to the citizen. EMDAR, who is EMDAR?
Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources.
Okay. And you mentioned that they were considering sheeting off the panels as impervious. Is that now a state requirement that we need to consider?
If you are looking to put solar, if you're looking to do an agricultural preservation and solar on anything like that, you have to consider them as being impervious surfaces.
That's not guidance to the planning board. That's not a zoning issue, right? That's an application to the state. I'm asking. I'm, yeah. I don't know what we do with that information, is sort of what I'm asking.
I'm throwing it out there into the universe and, well, because I need more information as well. It was, you know, I was in a room of 30 other people with four presenters in an hour, and it was a lot of information to take in. But that was a nugget that needs more investigation. But I thought it was worth sharing with the board.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And, and when I find more information, I will share that as well. Thank you.
Will do.
My back is killing. I twisted it yesterday.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Online? Okay. If you could.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Meg Sheehan. I will offer to try to clarify some of the MIPA certificate and what happened at the site visit with AD Makepeace and why MIPA was triggered. As the planning board member mentioned, it was 54 acres of deforestation. And in addition, it required a state permit, in particular, a take permit for endangered species, because the site is listed partially as priority habitat. As you noted, the analysis in that certificate went into great detail about deforestation and the impacts on water supplies and climate change and all other aspects of the environment that are clearly applicable here. And your solar bylaw is very specific about critical natural landscape. And although this particular site is not located in particular, critical natural landscape, it's surrounded by it. And you can look that up by looking at BioMap, which is the state GIS system that has different layers that classifies land according to its biodiversity importance. And critical natural landscape is an area in Wareham that, under the solar bylaw, solar is prohibited. In addition to this recent point about the impervious nature of solar panels, that relates directly to your responsibilities to ensure proper stormwater management with respect to solar and any other projects. And that's a serious, serious concern with the proposal for the 54 units near this site. And also, you have performance standards in Article 12 of the bylaw that are very specific. And I'm not sure if you're not applying those, because you're saying that the solar bylaw preempts those. But looking at those performance standards, they are extremely specific about the obligation to protect forests and wildlife and habitat. And that clearly gives you the authority, along with the rest of the site plan review bylaws, to require this applicant to conduct a biological survey. And there are scientific standards. You can look at DEP's website. That's the Department of Environmental Protection, or the federal government, what their qualifications are, or how they describe a biological survey to identify any species that are protected under the State Endangered Species Act. And one of the witnesses testified that there were northern cooters on or adjacent to that site. That is a federally protected species under the Federal Endangered Species Act. And this project is going to have to get a stormwater management permit from the federal government. It is a self-certifying permit, but that requires the applicant to check off whether they've done an archaeological survey and whether there are any federally endangered species. So, without a biological survey to identify whether there are or are not endangered species on the site, it would seem that the planning board would not be able to conduct a thorough review. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, through you to the speaker, if I may.
Of course.
Ms. Sheehan, I, I missed your reference. Where is the biological survey called out?
In performance standards.
Which, which bylaw? Or which?
Your bylaw, Article 12 Performance Standards.
Okay, so to speak to Article 12. Article 12, 1216.9, in the version of the bylaws that I think this applicant is filed under, 1216.9 excludes site plan special permit from Article 12. And the board has historically reviewed it that way. To that note, recognizing that gap, at the fall bylaw, the town passed an amendment to remove that exclusion. However, that's still awaiting Attorney General review. But I believe, historically, the, the planning board has understood 1216.9 to say site plan review special permit is exempt from Article 12. So, I refer you to that. You can draw your own conclusion, but that would, that's my statement, just for your information.
Which is not to say we, we might not require one for, for purposes of looking at health, safety and.
Oh, that, that, that's different than saying it's called out as a requirement that we're overlooking.
Right.
Thank you.
But, but thank you. It, we agree with you at the importance of those things, which is why we moved at Fall Town Meeting to remove that exclusion. But I don't believe it applies to this applicant.
Okay.
May I ask a question as well of the applicant, Mr. Chair?
Of course.
Ms. Sheehan, you talked about the site being surrounded by critical habitat, I think. And I wanted to be sure, were you talking about this site or the, the site that is the subject of the MIPA review?
I'm talking about this site, the 370 solar site. It's right on Mass Mapper.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to comment? Anyone online? Nope. Okay, hearing none and seeing none. I would entertain a motion that we continue the public hearing for 12-23 370 County Road LLC, site plan review and special permit to the meeting of May 13. Motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Mike Baptiste. All in favor. Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I remembered.
Just, I would have voted aye if I could vote.
I knew you would. Okay. Thank you. Uh, let's see here. Are you hoping I take you out of turn? Is that why you're still sitting there?
We have the next two.
There's no getting ready, I guess.
I mean, we can give us a break.
She needs a nameplate.
Yeah. 18-23 Christie LLC, preliminary subdivision, 1-13 North Carver Road.
All right, attorney Jillian Morton here for the applicant again.
Richard Young, prime engineering.
So, this is a preliminary subdivision in front of you. I don't know if you want to speak to the plan, but I, I have the covenants that I know that was something that spoke about.
Right. We, at the last meeting, we acknowledged that this application and the next application are being filed for zoning protection. We acknowledged that we had a precedent for handling subdivisions that were filed specifically for zoning protection, and we directed you to work, I think with Ken or someone. We had.
Yep. Sonia at the office provided me with a covenant. I don't know if she's provided it to you guys. I wanted you to review it before we signed it. I also have hard copies. But it's similar to the other ones you've, you've used, you know, saying that we're not going to be building this subdivision, all that stuff, so.
Did we get copies of that somewhere?
I emailed them.
Okay, I gotta look for it. But I, I remember it, so, so that's where I believe we left off. We had acknowledged that that was the plan, and I think we had acknowledged that we weren't going to go through the full subdivision rules and regulations and analysis, understanding the intent. And I think we agreed that we would be happy with the covenant if the applicant was happy with the covenant, to move these two forward. I don't, that's just where I remember. So, that was my, do you want to speak to that then, perhaps?
No, I, I think, I just want you guys to review the covenant, make sure you're good with it.
I don't have a copy, but.
I'm happy to email it again.
Did you see it?
I, I don't remember if I saw this one. I remembered, I remember, I don't remember seeing it specifically, but I do remember, I, I remember the, the covenant itself and the intent.
For this project?
Well, in what we did.
Just in general.
We did eight other ones.
Right. But we don't have one before.
Well, she's, she's.
If you just want this hard copy so you can have it for the file?
That'd be fine. Yep.
Yep.
Good old fashioned paperworks. Thank you.
It was sent on Tuesday last week.
Did anyone from the planning office review it? Ken?
Yes, I looked it over and found it acceptable. It's pretty much the same as it was done before. I sent out the covenant to the planning board on February 28th, day before I retired.
That, that email I do remember.
Yeah, I just found it. It's, it's, it's titled 18-23 Christie LLC, but the covenant that you sent says, "I undersigned AD Makepeace Company Incorporated, 158 to Harnett Road."
Because that's the form we used for that.
Right. But it doesn't apply to this.
No, no.
Project.
But it should be the same, should be the same language. That, that's how I read it.
It's the same content.
Yeah. I just resent it again.
So, are we gonna, are we gonna create a covenant that has the actual correct information on it?
I think that, that one does have the correct information on it.
Yep. So, Sonia sent me a, kind of a sample, and, and we put our information in there. Didn't change any of the, but I mean, if you guys want to take a look at it, and then I'll sign, I can sign it at any time. So, we kept all the same covenants in there that was provided, if you want to look at that one. And then, did you email?
I just resent it again.
I'll look at that.
So, do we want to take action, or do you want to send it to the attorney for review? Or Ken, Ken says he's, I mean.
Ken, you, you've stated you reviewed the covenant?
That's correct.
And it, it meets our requirements for this action as far as planning, zone, zoning freeze?
For, just for zoning freeze subdivision, yes, it meets the requirements.
We can take action on it?
Yes, you can. And what you'd be doing is you'd be endorsing the subdivision and with the condition that the covenant be included in it. This is a preliminary subdivision, so you, you don't really need to make much of a decision on this one. It's just a simple up or down. And you're waiting seven months later, I believe, is, is when the definitive subdivision has to be submitted, meet the requirements for the zoning freeze.
So.
Yep. Ken, does this need to be reviewed by our attorney?
No, it's been reviewed by the town's attorney already. This is the one that we used back in, a year ago at least, I think it was, maybe 18 months ago, for a slew of preliminary subdivisions that came through for zoning freeze when we were changing the, the solar bylaw.
Okay.
Are you satisfied?
Yeah. I mean, I think, I think if it's identical, it seems like there's no impediment to going forward.
And this is, right now, a preliminary subdivision anyway. They can't really build anything with a preliminary plan. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the preliminary subdivision plan for Project 1823 Christie LLC, 113 North Carver Road, subject to the covenant, which we reviewed, being executed at said covenant, guaranteeing that they are not actually going to build the subdivision. In, in layman's terms, has a lot more language, but subject to that covenant. And recognizing that they have to come back in seven months for a definitive plan, which would allow us to take further action.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Mikey Beach to it, I'm sorry. We have a motion by Carla Schultz, seconded by Mike Baptiste. All in favor? Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Actually, perhaps I got ahead of myself, because this is a public hearing.
Oh, good point. You're right.
So, we can, we can hold on my motion, but it is a public hearing. I apologize.
Being a public hearing, is there someone in the audience that wishes to speak to this? Online? Hearing none, seeing none? You must be clairvoyant.
So, I, I move and we acted, so I think, I think we're okay.
Do we need to close the public hearing?
Oh, we probably need to. I move that we close the public hearing for, God, we gotta get all our things in the right order. Thank you, Jane. For 1823 Christie LLC, preliminary subdivision plan, 113 North Carver Road.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Carla Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett. All in favor? Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Now. Now, do I need to, I remove my previous motion to approve the preliminary subdivision plan for 1823 Christie LLC, 113 North Carver Road, subject to the restrictive covenant, which we've discussed, being executed and properly filed.
There's your chance, Sam. Do we have a second? Second. Motion by Carla Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett. All in favor? Mike?
Hi.
Jane?
Hi.
Sam?
Hi.
Carl?
Hi.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, that was painful.
I thought we could clear some of these things pretty easily off the agenda.
19-23 370 County Road LLC preliminary subdivision plan.
Same as the last, right?
We're doing the exact same thing.
You have another copy of the covenant?
In the right order this time.
Thank you. And I have an electric copy. Thank you, Sonia.
Just the exact same thing?
Exact same thing with a different name on it.
We should like note those or sign them so we have a.
Which is an initial?
That way, if there's ever any doubt. Three pages, right?
Three pages.
You could see if there's any public comment while we're doing this.
Yeah, I'm just looking at something first. Okay, being that this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience or online that would wish to comment? Anybody online? Okay. Hearing none and seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing for 19-23 370 County Road LLC preliminary subdivision. Motion by Sam Corbett, do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mike Baptiste. All in favor? Mike?
Hi.
Jane?
Hi.
Sam?
Hi.
Carl?
Hi.
And the chair votes aye. I would entertain a motion to accept the preliminary subdivision plan for 370 County Road, Project 19-23, with the understanding that the supplied covenant be included, with the understanding that there is no building until they come back to us within seven months with a definitive subdivision plan. Do we have a second? A motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Mike Baptiste. All in favor? Mike?
Hi.
Jane?
Hi.
Sam?
Hi.
Carl?
Hi.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Oh, excuse me, which version of the bylaws will these actually apply to? The April 2023 Springtown meeting, because the Attorney General has not approved.
Correct, we applied prior to the.
And we haven't posted them anyway, so.
Correct.
Okay, next up, 15-23 Sarajon Realty LLC, special permit for cluster development Form C and site plan review hidden trails off County Road.
Good evening. Welcome. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Peter Titlebaum, project attorney, Brad Bertolo, project engineer, and John Churchill of Sarajon Realty are here before you to resume continued public hearing.
You can start whenever you're ready.
Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to Brad to go through a few plan revisions that were submitted to you. Yes, they were, they were submitted last week to the board, to the planning staff.
We have, we got it, they were posted, but do we have printed copies?
I got these monsters right now.
Could you read the date of the plans that we're going to be reviewing for the record, please?
Yeah, they were revised March 20th, 2024.
Is that revision number two?
Two. I have a few more small copies, if you need any additional copies.
Mike's looking for the, were they in your box?
They were, they were in a vanilla folder, yeah, Mr. Brad dropped off.
Yep. Is that one?
No, I think there's multiple.
Oh, hang on. For you. One for me.
Drake.
One for you.
Let me share it. I'll look over the past. Thank you.
Let me put the dates on these.
Good evening. Again, for the record, Brad Bertolo with JC Engineering. We were last before you on March 11th, and went through, went through the project, heard some comments from the Butters. I just wanted to get you up to speed, what's taken place in the last couple of weeks. On, on the 11th, we received our final review, peer review, conservation, as we had two hearings, or two projects, being, or two departments reviewing this project. We addressed comments in regards to the conservation we had in a meeting last week, and it was approved by the commission, this same set of plans that's before you. As part of that approval, I believe you're looking at an open space trail plan that we provided to the Conservation Commission, so they could see, kind of highlight the areas of trails within the open space. And they're basically conditioning, the order of conditions to include maintenance of those trails as, the red lines, yes. As some of those lines are within jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, so they're within 100 feet of, of resource areas, wetlands in the pond. So again, we got approval from the Conservation Commission. We also addressed.
We'll need to get a letter from.
Say, do we have that document?
We're still waiting on, on.
Yes, but in order for us to finish our work, we need that, that.
You will receive the order of conditions.
Thank you.
So along with the most recent plan revision, we addressed a handful of comments from the consultant. Most of it was minor. We had to address some easements on the plan. We addressed a groundwater separation. We had to elevate a drainage basin by like four inches just to meet our groundwater separation from mounding. And at the same time, taking into account some comments from one of the nearest of Butters at 500 County Road, Mike Gaydo, I believe, we added some additional buffering along the side of the right of way at the back of his lot to kind of thicken up some of the buffering between his property and the proposed road. That's, that's located the very far northern portion of the property, so no houses are in that area. It's just a road will enter to the north of him, off of County Road, and wrap around the back of his lot and extend south to where the proposed development is. That basically covers the plans to the, to the project. We also, taking into accounts some members, some comments from this board. Mr. Schultz had recommended that we provide open space management plan that was reviewed by town council. It's a set of draft covenants that basically states the restrictions of the open space, how it's going to be maintained and used in the future. It's a, it's a, I believe, a three-page document that was submitted again by, and reviewed by council, and he didn't have any issues with that, that document.
Do we have a copy of that?
Well, we're gonna speak, I have a whole lot of things to say about that, so. I appreciate that you took the action, though.
Carl, we aim to please.
No, no, I.
Again.
I know, it caused a whole flurry of discussion.
There was comments from Ms. Quirk regarding the 21E assessment, whether or not outside consultant needs to review. I don't believe it was a recommendation of this board to review that, but the town consultant had sent an email stating that it was a thorough job, and the project would be subject to standard, standard conditions during construction if, if anything is found on site. That basically covers the comments from, from the, from the board and from a Butters. There's been a number of recent comments from a Butters that we're really not prepared to address. I think they're pretty much the same comments that you just heard with the last project. I think more importantly, you know, one letter with comments references the AD Makepeace project, which is a completely different project, different area of town, a lot larger project than this site. That project refers to a solar facility over 57 acres, but that's part of a former high-yon mixed-use development that covered thousands of acres. And there were way more proposals involved with that project than just the 54-acre solar facility. That's, that property was also in natural heritage, so that obviously has different review standards. Moving into that, this letter discuss, discusses biomap areas as shown on Mass GIS. And I'd like to just read one comment directly from Mass GIS, so you guys are aware. This is, this is directly from Mass GIS, usage of biomap. I know that zoning bylaw currently, in regards to solar facilities, addresses that, but it's not a solar facility, so we're not subject to that, that section of the bylaw. But it states, "These data layers, data layers are intended for conservation planning purposes only, only in caps, and should not be used for regulatory purposes. NHESP layers designed for regulatory use include prior, priority and estimated habitat." This project's not within either of those, those areas. So I just want to make sure, make you're aware when the word biomap is mentioned, at least in regards to this project. Again, this, this project is a 56-lot subdivision by right, showing that we could fit 56 house lots. There's conventional plans. This is a, I guess, a reapplication for a prior approved 44-lot subdivision, along with an adjacent lot. It's all under current owner, one, one or two owners, 2004 Realty Trust and Fairing Hill LLC. Says two owners on this project, same owners that were involved with the prior approval. That encompassed 56 lots throughout the entire development. And after looking at this project, we felt an open space was, was more well-deserved for this area. So that's why we're concentrating the development into one area of the property, and reserving 115 acres of open space, which accounts for 75% of this property. Local zoning bylaw, Article 8, requires 50% to be open space. So we're adding 50% on top of the minimum that's required. So that's, that's a big benefit of leaving 115 acre, 115 acres as they are today. And fortunately, there's, there's a number of paths, so it's easily used and maintained for recreational purposes as the intent of the bylaw states. So I, I know there's been discussions of too, too dense of a project. It's, we're not going anything above what's by right. We're just taking the acre and a half lots that are allowed by right, and building on 13,000 to 20,000 square feet average lots to concentrate development in one area, so we can provide more meaningful buffering in open space that can be enjoyed by the benefits of these, these homeowners that we live in now. I don't want to go on much longer. I think we've pretty much discussed everything. We've, we've met local bylaws, subdivision control law, zoning bylaw. We've had at least three reviews from the consultant regarding drainage. He has, you know, full sign off on that. I'm not gonna put words in his mouth, but he's here tonight if you have any questions for him. And would just like to turn it over to you, and if there's any additional comments, we'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Carl?
Sure. Couple of things. First, a question about the plans. There's a couple of notes that need to be on the plan. And could you just let me know if they're there? I think there should be a note speaking to 819.1, which says no other use than residential or recreational, shall be permitted. So I don't know if there's a note on the plan, but it, I'd like to see that.
There is one in the.
But that's in here. It said, I said note on the plan. Specifically, 819.2 calls for a note on the plan that says, "No lot shown on the plan, which a permit is granted under this section may be further subdivided, and a notation to this effect shall be shown on the plan."
That's, that was a note that was a comment that we addressed from the consultant. We picked up on that, and we did add it to.
It's on here somewhere? Can you just tell me where?
It's.
Thank you. I just, I'm just trying to tick and tie here.
Sheet four of 25, note number six.
Well, you added a caveat that says, although the planning board may permit relocation of lot lines. It doesn't say that in the bylaw, but.
It does on. Yeah, it does. Let me just find that's.
Thank you, then, thank you. That, that takes care of that note. All right.
Just, just brought in here, 819.1. Just brought in here, 819.1. This is a residentially zoned district, so I don't think really any commercial uses will be allowed.
Zoning can change. I'd like to see the note on the plan.
We can add that.
Or we just have to make it a condition of our...
That's fine.
If we were to approve it, we would. I don't want to speak presumptuously. So a question, I think, through you to Mr. Titlebound, because the email I saw came from you, although Mr. Batolo spoke to Attorney Bowen's review. So my question is, is the email that you forwarded or that's sent you forwarded that said Attorney Bowen approves as to form, is that your submittal is meeting the requirement?
Yes. That's directed specifically at the required provisions under Section 818, ownership and management of common open space. There are three points in that portion of the bylaw where Town Council's approval is required. It was submitted to him solely to look at those under his responsibilities under the bylaw, and this is why he, quote, "approved as to form." He's not, he did not approve the document as a whole piece. He approved the sections that related to, let's see, I might as well read them out into the record while I'm here. Well, I can summarize that he has to approve the form of ownership of the common open space, which he did. The bylaw allows the homeowners association to do it, the lot owners, in the form of a homeowners association, or alternatively, they could set up a trust to do it. The method here is going to be through the homeowners association. That meets the bylaw.
Okay.
I want to say the provisions establishing the corporation of trust shall be approved by Town Council, so that checks that box. If we go down further, if we look at management, Town Council also says that as part of the common open space, "An agreement satisfactory to Town Council empowering the town of Wareham to perform maintenance of the common open space in the event of failure to comply with the above." So that imposes a duty, in this case, upon the future homeowners association to maintain the paths, and if they don't, theoretically municipal maintenance could go out there with their brush cutters, go wild, and send them a bill. The likelihood of that happening, to be honest, in a town like ours where we struggle to maintain what we have, let alone what somebody else's has, that's a provision that may not come into effect in terms of any practicality until 20 years down the road when the town, you know, finally regains a municipal maintenance department of sufficient size to deal with our town.
Thank you.
But it's there anyway.
Thank you. So my problem with the form that you sent to us is that Attorney Bowen says that he approved the document as to form. Unfortunately, there was no reference to the document. The document wasn't attached. I have no idea what document he actually reviewed. I presume it was this one, but there's no linkage between his approval as to form and this document, which I think needs to be established.
Okay. Would you like me to get further clarification from him on that score?
No, I think Carl was pretty clear on that. Just need to tie his comment that he's approving it to that document.
Now, to Mr. Titlebound's question about process, there were some concerns about access to Town Council, given the admonition of policy from the Select Board and the negative comments that this board has been given by the Select Board about our access to Council. So we need to make sure that how this is reviewed by Council follows that policy, which we've been admonished for not following.
And, yes, I've been in the position of the Select Board myself, and, you know, they do have that policy that you go through the chairman to get access to Town Council. You know, fortunately, as the case may be, if you view this fortunately, I'm, as a working for the proponent, I'm not bound by those restrictions.
It says that no citizen of the town... We're very concerned about that policy and how it applies to us, so all I'm saying is, I'm not asking you to go directly to Town Council. I think, I'll defer to the chair, but I think the best approach is to go through the planning office to get that clarification. I appreciate that we need to do it, and I'm only raising it because we've been chastised.
Okay. Yeah. I wasn't fully aware of the nature of the chastisement, shall we say.
If I could take you back for...
Please amplify.
For a moment here. I'm also, I would be interested in amplification of the term "approved as to form." To me, that indicates a level of review that doesn't encompass what you just went through, which is, I've reviewed the zoning bylaws, and I find that this document meets all the requirements of the bylaw. It's a more formalistic review that that term connotes for me, so I think I would request something more detailed, not hugely detailed, but enough so that we can look at Attorney Bowen's position and say, "Well, he looked at this, and this is okay by him." And then the planning board will have its own review of the document and may have other thoughts, but, I mean, I can see how this, how you would have gone to him on this, given how the subdivision or the cluster zoning bylaw reads.
I read it, if I could interrupt, I read it as imposing a duty on us as the applicant to go to him and get this and bring it to you.
And I can see how you read that, but it was very confusing to the rest of us.
Okay.
So it would be best if we could, you know, find ways to avoid that confusion and, at the same time, answer Carl's request that this be, and my request, that this be something that makes sense to us and is complete.
Yeah, so link...
Link it all together.
This document to his...
So just so I'm clear, what you're looking for is Town Council's specific reference to the provisions in Section, in the 800s...
Right.
...that require his approval. In other words, I find that this document conforms with the requirements of Section this, 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 that, 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 the other thing.
And when you say "this document," we have to somehow...
Identify specifically.
Identify this document.
Yeah, that's fine.
You can attach it.
Yeah, somehow. And I appreciate, I appreciate you taking the initiative to go get this taken care of.
Well, I took your admonition at the last meeting to heart.
Thank you. No, I appreciate that, but we were quite surprised at...
To see it actually happen.
No, no, to see that you actually had access to Town Council when we don't have access to Town Council.
And it would have been, it would have been, it would have been nice if there was just some sort of a heads-up to the planning board and said, "Hey, you know, we have to deal with this. We've arranged for a meeting with Attorney Bowen. Just want to keep you in the loop."
Yeah, to be honest with you, I simply sent a document to him and said, "Can you review in connection with the bylaw and say that it worked?"
It's still his time, though, which we don't have access to, as Carl has eloquently said.
Fortunately, access to Town Council was something I couldn't solve when I was a selectman, so I can't solve it sitting here.
It hasn't been solved now either, so don't feel bad.
So my only request is, thank you for following up.
We'll get to more specifics, Carl.
Yeah, thank you. And then I'll read this. I haven't had a chance to read it, but as Sherri said, the planning board will have our opinions on it. Hang on. Did I, Sherri? So we talked about, that was 818.2, we talked about, I had a question for, back to plans, Article 10 dot 10, landscape plan. Do we have a landscape plan in here? Article 10 seems to require a landscape plan.
We have proposed trees on the plan, on the road layout.
So you're, but Article 10 has some very specific, if you could take a look at Article 10 and the requirements for the landscape plan?
Yeah. Subdivision control, the planning board regs states it needs street trees, and we show that on the plan.
But I'm not specifically from subdivision because this is all site plan special permit. So there are additional requirements for site plan special permit. So just take a look at Article 10 and make sure that we meet all those requirements. 15.2, the numbering scheme in our bylaws, 815.2, sub-paragraph. So this is probably a question to Josh. It's a cluster development requirement. Analysis of the site, including wetlands, slopes, conditions within the 100-year flood and over five inches, natural planning board can... Did they cover that in the ConCom review?
Yeah, I would say a lot of the stopes that probably pertain to that are already covered within the buffer zone to any resource area.
This is specific to cluster development, so I'm referring, you see what I'm referring to, Brad? 815.2, paragraph 961. Yeah, it's, yeah, we're well aware, as Sherri will report on later, of some of the unique features of our zoning bylaws.
Yeah, we obviously evaluate the site as a whole, and that's the reason why we did a cluster development.
All right, but can you point me to that analysis if it's included in your...
It's part of our open space project that looked at the project as a whole and where the resource areas are.
All right, so you're going to tell me I've got to go find it, and then when I get done to the findings, I'll have to decide whether you meet that requirement. Thank you. Okay, next one. 815.3 is the environmental impact assessment. That's the lightship report, right?
Is part of the site plan review process, there is a checklist that we need to follow, and we submitted all those documents originally in September.
This is 815.3, so there is an environmental impact assessment in the plan.
It's all tied together with our original submittal from September.
I'm getting ready, I'm getting ready to wrap this up, and I want to make sure...
Just make it sure, yeah.
Phil, did you want to, you believe it's...
It was in the research.
Thank you. 815.3. 815.6, we talked last meeting about a traffic study. 815.6 seems to require a traffic report.
It's the same situation. We included all the numbers in the original report.
Okay, so when I get ready to prepare my findings, I'll be able to find it in the initial report.
Yes.
I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm trying to make sure that we didn't miss anything.
We fully understand you've got a list and you're checking it twice.
1010, notation on the plan, and we talked earlier with Attorney Sheehan that Article 12 is still exempt, although, as Sherri pointed out, we could impose requirements. I don't think we have. So those were my comments at this point.
Thank you. Sam?
You know the comments made earlier. I'm not focusing them on you. It's the entirety of the area. Make that clear. I'm going to make, Carl and Sherri did a great job. I'm not going to beat a dead horse and repeat everything. I'm going to go to an area that's completely different, probably not the right place, but I disagree with your association, homeowners association. I belong to one. I keep being told that they don't have the money to plow the roads. So when I moved in, there's eight houses. My house is the smallest one with the least amount of improvements. I paid just over $5,000 in taxes, so if you multiply it by eight, you've got $40,000 the first year, and you can't plow my roads. My intention is to try to change that. I just want to get it on the record here that I wish other people would speak up. I don't think you should plow your own roads. I don't think you should be forced into an association. I'm in an association. We have 18 houses. Because of the association, five have already moved out, gone elsewhere. I know Michael belongs to one. He doesn't share my concerns completely, but I think it's wrong of the town to collect massive amounts of money and say they can't plow the roads. I disagree totally. I hope you guys don't have to plow the roads. I'm not sure where I'm going with it, but I'm going with it. It's just wrong. That's all.
Mr. Chair, in deliberation, I can refer you to 813 dot four. "The created principal streets, if any, shall be offered to the town for acceptance as public ways." They don't have to create an association.
I understand that.
Well, but it's their choice. So if they do create an association, they have to maintain the roads.
I agree, but it shouldn't be imposed on them, which it is in some cases.
It's not being imposed on them, now, if the town doesn't accept the streets, which they have the right to do, that's a...
Again, to my point, we have to accept, we have to return plans to us, meet all of the requirements, have to go to ConCom, the project is overseen by the town engineer or peer. When it's all done, everything is accepted as proposed by the developer.
I do think we're getting off our tangent, don't Sam?
I knew it when I started. I just wanted to get it out there on the record.
Yeah.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would disagree a little bit, because I can tell you, in my time, you know, sitting up there on a different board, this was a constant, constant fight, and it was a consternation to people who bought houses and were told by their realtor, "Oh, the town plows this and this, that, and the other thing." You know, for a snowfall was the town truck, and...
There's two sides to the argument. I mean, I understand Sam's frustration. I also understand that the association that I lived in, when I was over on to Haunted Pond, we had 16 houses, and we had no problem plowing our road. So it's just a matter of how well the homeowners association is managed, and based on the current financial status of the town, I wouldn't hold my breath.
We're in great shape, just so you know.
They're not going to accept any roads.
We're in great shape.
You keep saying that, and I don't hear that from anybody else.
So, but I get his side of it, and I understand.
You want me to respond to that?
No.
Okay. I'm on other committees also, that we're in great shape.
The other portion of that, since you're going to kick the door open, is, so this is 50, what'd you say it was, 56?
56.
56, and they're all going to be two- and three-bedroom homes.
Yep.
Right?
Yeah, probably three-bedroom homes.
Three bedrooms, which means kids. So that $6,000, $7,000, $8,000 a year that these homes are going to be paying, the taxes are going to be gobbled up by the school system. So there is no money left to plow the road.
Okay. The street that I live on, when it was built, first house had no kids, second house had no kids, third house had no kids, last house, there were two kids. One was in high school, one was in college, I think.
Yeah, my neighborhood was the same way. There was only one kid in my neighborhood, and it was mine.
That's my point. They don't...
And I sent them to private school.
Yeah. I was going to say, the kids are all going to go to Tabor Mike, so I don't think you have to worry.
I know, way off.
Okay.
But I got to get it out there.
All right. So before I kick it over to this end of the table, I did have one thing that I wrote down from the last meeting. So we broached the subject of affordable.
Oh, I forgot to bring it up.
And I saw you cringe when we brought the subject up.
I forgot. Thanks, thanks, Mike, for remembering. I didn't have it on my list.
So has that subject gone anywhere?
There's a couple of things, obviously, with the affordable. We'd like to, we're just waiting to get, we're waiting to get through this process so we can see, and we need to see all the permits in order to be able to see what the investment, if you will, into getting to the finish line at this point. So I have no idea.
With no affordable, this project puts us 5.6 houses behind the eight ball.
And I agree, and we're just trying to meet all the regulations and all the bylaws. And I know, and I don't want to pull regulatory, but, I mean, Town of Duxbury just had a case. They tried to impose on a special permit affordability, so we're going to overturn that. I will, I can tell you right now, there's only 11 houses on the market under $500,000 in Wareham today. My goal here is to make these affordable for the citizens of the Town of Wareham.
$699?
Yeah.
I would say affordable's a very bright term.
You know what? Housing costs are extremely expensive, as you know. I mean, just the, just building, the subconsultants, you know, I mean, I'm, me personally, as the engineer, as the land surveyor, and as the developer, I pride myself in... affordable, not using the word affordable housing in the way you're using it, but making these affordable for, for the, for the kids and the generational kids in the town of Wayham.
I'm specifically using it.
Yeah, I know you are.
No, because, because of the requirement, and you, thank you for remembering.
This is not a forty-B. I just, this is a bar right.
And we don't want it to be a forty-B.
But it would be nice if it was, if there was fifty-six lots and the average cost was 550, 600,000 dollars. It'd be nice if there was two or three of them in there that were available to somebody for 500 grand.
I don't, what's the affordable? I don't remember the AMI. It's eighty percent of the AMI.
Something like that.
Yes. And I'm not sure, and that's the discussions to have. And that's just, you know, talked about CPA money, we can talk about, we can go down that road, I think, after, at the, you know.
And the, the Housing Trust has grant money available to help buyers, but doesn't, could theoretically help you too. CPC has money to help you buy it down. There are, there are avenues, and I recognize, we can't impose it on you. We don't have an inclusionary bylaw.
But we can, we can talk about it.
We can, we can discuss it.
You can definitely discuss it, and I give you my word that I will be coming to see you, once I do have all the, all the ducks in a row and the permits in place, so.
Yes, I've let John know that the Affordable Housing Trust is very supportive of the notion of affordable housing. I was before them in January with another client, talking about this very thing. And they had somebody else at that meeting too, talking about affordable. So this is, this is Kyle's baby, and we know that.
Yeah, we have another developer that we're, we're much smaller than you, but we work with him and we help him get affordable units.
And if I recall correctly, Wayham is in the Boston AMI?
Yes.
So affordable is a really relative term.
You don't have the same problem you would have in Marion, for example, because they're in a different, even though, even though their house prices are very different than ours, their affordable number is much lower than, than ours.
So it puts it, puts it to market rate pretty close.
Thank you. Mary?
So, we've talked about the, the homeowners agreement and all of that. I'm in a homeowners agreement as well, and I have no complaints at all, so we can make this part short.
You're welcome.
What I'm concerned about is we've gotten some letters and information from members of the public that are fairly detailed and lengthy, and raise issues about this project. And, you know, this, we've heard issues about other projects in this area tonight as well and on other nights. And there are some common themes that are running through them, which Brad highlighted. But I'm concerned, given that members of the public have spent time and effort, and in some cases, resources, looking at this project and raising concerns about it, that we find a way to address those concerns in some way that shows respect to what they're providing to our process, because we rely on those comments to go, to guide us in what we're looking at and the findings that we make. And I would suggest, I mean, one way to do it is to begin by asking you all to, you know, respond to the issues that have been raised. And, you know, some of them, Brad, you already have responded to in one way or another, but I think an organized response to it, at least to me, would be very helpful in figuring out what it is we have here that we need to deal with and what conditions we might wanna impose on this. And then, once we have your response, I think we would work with Phil to see what it is he can help us with, and whether we need additional help to work through it. Yeah, I'm, you know, troubled by loss of habitat and, you know, wildlife corridors, issues with the water that have been raised here. And I think, for the sake of the best interest, the health, safety, and welfare of the town, we need to address these. And, you know, even more pragmatically, in a decision that we render, each one of these issues is one that we should be able to address and, and defend on appeal if, if we find for you, or, you know, otherwise could bear on our decision. So that, that's what I would ask for and recommend at this point.
Well, we, we are prepared, we could, I, I just wanna remind the board too, that we've received two letters from an individual. And the first letter we received was based on a butter, saying that there was fifty-five gallon drums. That's why we had the board go out, and let's go find those fifty-five gallon drums, and I believe Josh was there. And we still can't find those fifty-five gallon drums. The twenty-one E was done in response to that, which I will say, that was the first time in my twenty-five years that I was actually, had to do a twenty-one E for, for, for a board prior to a planning board approval. Usually those come after. So we did do that, and they found no reportable limits. There's a great review by Alan, Alan Major. They, they did a thorough, extremely thorough review. And that first letter that came out said this was a, if I believe it was the terminology, a hazardous waste site and should be reported to DEP, I recall. So then, now, we just got another letter, and we can go through that letter if you like. I mean, I feel bad for the people in the audience, but portion of that letter was, I have no idea what the ENF that was attached to that, I have, I have no idea what the merits are about that ENF. I have, so I'm not gonna answer to that, to meet this ENF in the back of a, of a, of a thirty-four-page document, because I, I don't know, I don't even know their site. We can't, we can't speak to the merits of, of how you attach our project to another project. And I think Brad did cover it, and basically, he must have looked it up. It's a much larger project.
We're, we're all familiar with it.
You are, okay. We're not familiar with it, so it was kinda unfair to us to, you know, our record's getting flushed with, again, we talk about affordability, we talk about marketability. There's some letters on file that are, quite frankly, are not truthful. And I can't go, I'm, I'm, we're not gonna go and have a tit-for-tat on, in my opinion. I don't think it's in the best interest of anybody. But marketability-wise, this record is out there for the public to see. So when I go try selling houses and you see it's a hazardous waste site, you may want, not, not wanna buy in there. And so that is really, it hurts. It hurts the, the project as a whole. So I'm trying to give merit to that, and we have given some merit to some of the comments. If we do trip the ENF threshold, we definitely will be filing ENF. That's the process. We will file MEPA. We go through the process. We're not trying to skirt any processes. But I can tell you right now, we can go through that letter. I mean, one of the comments was that we're, we're stripping the entire site down twenty feet to the level of the pond. I mean, I'm not gonna, do we, do we, does the board think that we're stripping the whole entire site down to the level of the pond? No, the existing condition plans, the proposed plans, we're putting a, a road. A road to service fifty-six lots. That's what we're putting in. So we can, you know, Brad, I'll let Brad speak to it, because he, he did market up. So if you want, if there's anything particular you'd like us to address in there, I would definitely be more than happy to, to discuss that. I don't know if we need to do a full-blown response to something.
This, this project materially hasn't changed much since our original submittal in September. And we read this document at the eleventh hour, when they've had seven months to review this project. Nothing's changed with this project. Same layout, same number of lots, same footprint of work.
That was Meg Sheehan's letter. Is that what you're referring, you were, Meg by community land and.
There were three. There was the submittal by Meg Sheehan's group. There was Kathy Papalardo's submission, and also Eric Lentilla's submission. And so I would just say, sitting here, it, it, well, sitting there, it may be very obvious to you what doesn't make sense and what's untrue, et cetera. It's not so obvious sitting here. And so what, what I'm asking for is some help in sorting through that, so that we can make decisions that are based on health, safety, and welfare, and don't require us to say, "Well, we'll just dismiss all of this," you know, when, when members of the public raise issues with us.
I, I think I can speak to, Mr. King, I can speak through you. Basically, we meet all the requirements of chapter forty-eight, chapter forty-one. We meet your subdivision control law requirements. We meet your zoning bylaw. It's been thoroughly reviewed by Alan and Major. So, in my opinion, I'm a professional engineer, professional land surveyor. Brad is a, is a great engineer. Alan and Major, he's a professional. So these were all flushed out by professionals, so I can assure you that we're not missing anything here, and we meet all the requirements. So we're being asked to address, in a butter, not even in a butter, some, somebody doesn't even live in the town, her letter, if you will. And I believe it's, 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 it's almost like, we're not answering that letter as if we would answer an Alan and Major letter, because we, we look at regulations. We look at the requirements and regulations, and these are somewhat, almost personal, not personal, but they're very, they're talking about the wildlife, and they're talking about things that we have. But by meeting all the regulations and all the requirements of, of the town bylaws, we meet, we meet the requirements. We meet those environmental impact statements. We've, we've, we've shown that through drainage calculations, through all the other impact statements that you have in the document you have, which has been here for seven months. So for someone to file it, and then for us, it, I feel it's unfair to us to actually go through all the butter's responses and, 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 what do you wanna call it? I guess, I'm gonna say poke holes, but if you will, it's just, I know Eric, Eric spoke at the last meeting, and I'm sure I see him here tonight, so he's gonna speak again. So I don't wanna take too much time regarding that. But we talked, you know, just talking about, obviously, talking about the natural, the habitat, and that's what I see a lot of. So the habitat, so to answer those, and I believe Papa, he was talking about the habitat as well. So that's why you have in front of you a cluster subdivision, open space cluster subdivision. We're gonna preserve 115 acres on privately-owned property for the turtles, for the foxes, for the coyotes, for, for all that. That's, so the, the project speaks for itself with, with respect to the environmental, what we've gone through. When, when we looked at this project, this project was approved as a noncluster back in 2010. And that's why you see on an assesses map, you see all those little, all these little acre-and-a-half lots. So we looked at that, and we said, "We're not gonna build this in preserving zero open space." We said, "We're gonna preserve 115 acres of open space to give the, the environment and all the, all the animals places to go." So, I mean, what, what we, you know, I appreciate any other members, but you're asking us to, at the eleventh hour, to sort of answer, answer to, to an individual.
Problem allegations.
Yeah. But any, but if you read through there, and if you have any questions at all, that we're more than happy to answer. But even some of those things, you don't need to be an engineer to look at, and it's not even written by an engineer. It's not, it's not, it's the substantive, the matter, the substantive matter in there speaks to things about engineering, but it's not written by an engineer. And I was, I looked at it and, and it sort of, it's almost like we missed something. Did Alan Major miss something? Does it, you know, it's almost, almost insulting. It's like, you know what, we, we, you know, we're, we're, we're dropping the elevation of the property twenty feet and clearcutting it? I mean, that's not part of the proposal. So it's hard to answer, so it's hard to answer or, or refute this letter when it's so, it's, it's, it's some of those comments are far-fetched, quite frankly.
Well, so I hear that as a no, and recognize that we have authority that goes beyond the regulations. And I don't know how other members of the board feel, but I feel as if some, some help would be appreciated in, in understanding why everything that's been raised should, should not be considered by this board. And it seems to me to be a reasonable request and something that could be fairly, fairly easily addressed.
If I might ask, do you have any specific questions that you can pose? I mean, you've obviously read, read the submittals, and, you know, they've raised, you know, some concern in your mind. Are there any, could you point to us some of the highlights that, that perhaps we could address, at least in a brief forum?
In, in all of the detail, it raises questions for me. You know, it's, and perhaps some of it is what, you know, these are things that could be addressed, you know, right off the top. I didn't, you know, prepare for this by saying, "Well, what do I particularly wanna know?" As much as I'm really concerned and question how all of this is. It has been presented to us in exactly, exactly the way that you describe, but I am an attorney, although not allowed to practice in this state. And, you know, my experience tells me that there often is more than one side, and I'd like to hear your side.
Mr. Chair, through you, to the applicant, to Mr. Titlebaum specifically, you said, what were some specific concerns you had? Very specifically, my question to Brad about eight nineteen, nineteen point one, two, three, the four articles. As long as I can find it clearly in your application, it speaks to many of those concerns, not all. But my, my, my request to be able to find that stuff, so that when I do articulate a finding, I can speak on your behalf, as Mr. Churchill passionately spoke, but also acknowledge the citizens' concerns and say, yes, we heard the citizens' concerns, we reviewed the application. Here we find in the application where they speak to this issue, and we either find that you spoke to it.
Credibly.
Credibly and appropriately, or we find that you didn't. And if we find that you didn't, and we rule against you, at least you know where or why. And I don't wanna find for or against you by missing something in the application. That was, so that was, to answer your question, Mr. Titlebaum.
Okay.
I'm gonna review the application, I'm gonna review the bylaws. As Sherry said, we've got, we've gotta listen to the citizens, and I've gotta match everything when we, when we come to the end. So I think she was just asking, to, to the degree that you can help us tick and tie, which, I'm not an engineer, well, I am an engineer, but I'm not a practicing engineer. But we have to tick and tie. That's all. So that answers, that's my answer to your question, Mr. Titlebaum.
I mean, we can, I don't wanna commit to it, but I guess, obviously, we're gonna be continued this evening, and we can submit a, submit a response to, I just don't wanna go back and forth with, you know, just as, you know, with, with, with a, with an entity that's.
You could, you're, you're entitled, but a suggestion might be, we believe we've addressed this concern in this section of our application adequately. And, and Phil's review says you have, but we just need to, I think that was, that was your.
Exactly. I mean, this is, you know, how do we fit everything together into a coherent decision about this site? And may be obvious to you, maybe in the application, you've made references to, well, that was in the application. The volume of material in front of this board is rather immense. Time passes. We need help putting this together and understanding what it is that, that is important, and how, how we should go on this.
Yeah. To Mr., to Brad, can I call you Brad? I don't wanna be disrespectful. You're right, you submitted your application back in September. I read it in September. I've read twenty-five applications since then, and I don't, before I write my decision, I will go back and review it, but I don't, I don't remember every detail of your application. And I tried to read the lightship report, and I got through it, and I'll do my best, but, as you know, it was, what, a hundred and some pages, so very dense engineering calculations. I rely on Phil's comments. So we're just asking for help. We ask for the citizens' help, which is why they send us letters. We ask for your help. And we get to the end, and we have to make a decision.
Yeah, I get, we'll do our best to make, I mean, some of the stuff talks about lightships, which is not my, you know, we didn't, we consulted out lightship, they did a, you know, they did the twenty-one E, not, not us. And, and I think it's pretty clear that there was, you know, no reportable limits. And one of those, but let us talk about, they're disputing lightships. So do I, I can't answer to that.
And in those cases, we, we have to, we have to take that and say, here's what we, here's what we had to decide.
Right.
If they, they come back with their own lightship report that contradicts, then we got something different to talk about.
Right. Exactly.
Yeah, just help us connect the dots.
Yep. Okay. We'll, we'll do our best to help the.
Would you, would you be, I mean, I don't think, I guess the point here is, we don't wanna just turn this into point, counterpoint, point, counterpoint, point, counterpoint. But there are some fairly serious allegations in there that, that we believe are misstatements of fact. There are other things that they discuss in there that really aren't jurisdictional at this point, that, for example, would certainly be covered in a MEPA review. And we understand that there is a, a health, safety, and welfare sort of aspect that the board can consider, but specifics as to wildlife and things like that, those, those are the state's purview under the MEPA program.
There are purview under the bylaws.
Somewhat. But the, the big one comes with the state. I think we.
I'm not trying to impose the MEPA standard, I'm trying to impose our bylaw standard.
Yep.
As long as I can find. As long as I can find it.
I mean, we can come back with that, I think that's, that's...
Oh, please do.
Well, we're gonna have to come back.
Some time with that.
You're gonna have to come back anyway, because we have to get the attorney bowens ticking and tying.
Yeah, yeah, and where this was just dropped Thursday, I mean, that, I mean, if this was, if this was dropped, and I was expected to act on it tonight, it wouldn't happen. So you obviously deserve, deserve some time to...
Which will respond.
To go through it, yeah. Especially a 34, a 34-page document on Thursday.
You know where I stand on that?
Yeah, I'm right there with you, man. I'm right there with you.
Yeah, well, I would just say it's 34 pages, but there are nine that might be, might or might not be germane to the project.
Yeah, but you can address that when you go through it. We don't, we don't need to go through that tonight.
Thank God.
Yeah.
And you, thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
Other comment?
Yeah, well, that's where I was gonna go to, as long as everybody, Mike, you got anything to...
I've got a couple of questions. I think I asked it before, and I never got a real answer. Ancient ways and rights to cross that property. There's no way in hell that big piece of property stayed there when nobody had rights to cross and recross that property. No way.
The only thing we could find in the deeds is Mackey, Mackey Way.
Yeah. Mackey Way went up to the T Road.
It was like 19, yeah, so that was all Haju property, as you know, before it was Whitehead. So Haju sold the property to, Haju sold the property to Whitehead in, what, 1941?
Early, late 40s.
Late 40s, and then it was Whitehead since then, but Haju owned all that property around there as well.
Right.
And that's why you have at the end of Squirrel Island Road, there's a Haju Drive, it's a one-lot, two-lot subdivision, I believe, it says a private Haju at the end of Squirrel Island.
So Mackey Way's a dead-end road now?
Mackey Way, the gentleman in Mackey has gated that off, and, and actually, in addition to that, the Crambury Bog actually fell into itself, the, one of the dike roads, so it's actually impassable in past 53 Mackey.
Okay, because what it does, it, there's a couple of lots on the top of the hill that it cuts off, because in the original plan, that bog, or part of that bog was going to be turned over to Whitehead, well, Whitehead, LaRusso. That was gonna be part of the development, it never fell through. It's still privately owned, and between you cutting it off on this end with no right-of-way to get in there, on the other side, you're making a dead-end lot.
No, we purposely, because Walcott as well, Walcott has rights, as you know, Walcott has rights through Pennington's property, I believe, in addition to, and, and, and that's the easement, one of the easements that actually was, was actually done recently by us.
We ended all over that place and that property. Way back in the days.
Our right-of-way follows that, that road from Squirrel Island all the way, and then via's off, and as we've talked about before, we have Walcott and through Pennington's property, that we're creating or leaving those and creating easements, just in case or for future, because we can't cut them off, as you know. So our right-of-way, our right-of-way follow, our right-of-way follows that old, that old road.
Right, on top of the hill.
Yep, correct. So we purposely did that because, for rights, and as you know, with the electrical easements, there is electric easements throughout that whole property, where they exist, and, you know, but we're cleaning that up as well. We have rights through Squirrel Island to, Whitehead has rights through Squirrel Island when Haju granted Whitehead the property. There's happens to be gates now at the end of Squirrel Island Road, too, preventing us from accessing the property. So old man Pennington let us go through his property, and that's how we've been accessing the property.
So that, so lots on the top, on the, end of Mackey Way are dead, basically?
No, they, they came off of, they came off of Alley's Way. Those two lots came off of Alley's.
There's three of them up there.
Oh, no, no, there's the, the, the prior to, you see what I'm saying? Mackey Way, they were never meant to be accessed by Mackey Way. Those are gonna be accessed by Alley's Lane, under the original, under that subdivision. That's off property, that's owned, DeFleece's property. Is that what you're speaking to?
Right.
Yeah, so that, that property is adjacent now to this. And again, same as Walcott as well, is adjacent to this right-of-way on that left side. So we're not, we're not cutting them off.
So they, if they could access off your road, if they wanted to go to that property from the top?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
All set, Mr. Mike?
Yeah, yeah, makes me happy for right now.
Okay, good.
Mike, are you that old that you can remember all these things?
I'm a lot older than you. I've lived in this part of town all my life, so, you know, we had wood roads all over the place, and every time another subdivision comes, a couple more of them disappear. You know, people don't appreciate ancient ways. There was one from Lincoln Hill that went all the way to Swiss Beach, by the old rant house, and people said, no, no, yeah, that was, it was a real road, and that was the access for you to get to Swiss Beach in the olden days. It's gone now.
Yep.
So I think it's part of our preview, is to protect these people on these ancient ways, and, you know, people that have railways across certain properties, you know. I know if I had property up there, I would be pretty pissed off, but, that's it, I'll let you go, John.
Thanks, Mike.
Jane?
I'm just gonna reiterate what I said the last time, that I hope that you, I will advocate for you going to see about getting variance for the zoning setbacks for this. They're applicable to the larger lots, the larger standard lots, but when you see these with a cluster and smaller lots, they just don't work.
It puts them right on the bank.
It just pushes them right to the back of the lot, and...
No backyard for the kids.
No backyard, all front yard, so the kids are playing in the street, so...
Oh, that's good for them, it's no traffic on that road, so...
But that, that would be subsequent to our...
Yes, I know, I understand that.
No, it was a question, I wanted to...
Yeah, yes, I know that it is, but I still want to just put it out there, that I would still advocate.
If, if it's snowing out, you can put them out on the street and not have to worry about the plow. Okay. All right. Being a public hearing, is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to this project? Annie, Eric? Now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna preface this with one thing. If you're gonna reiterate the same concerns over wildlife and groundwater and everything that you brought up with the solar project next door, that's fine, you can put it on the record, but I would ask for a very abbreviated version, because honestly, I don't want to sit here till 11 o'clock hearing the same thing again and again. So having said that, well, Anne, you had your hands up for us.
I know your hackles have been up, so I'm like, gonna try to stay calm myself, okay? A couple of...
Anne, introduce yourself.
Oh, Annie Hayes, Fair, Fairing Hill, Farmers Lake.
We know who you are, but...
52 Farmers Lake. Couple of, you know, sidebars, perhaps. One is that there's an open space map that the town made for state approval, and it has priority areas with stars for preservation. And this area is, one, it seems like it's all green in this area, so the whole area wanting to be preserved. I'll send it, I, you may have a different reading. There's that one. The traffic study, when I, when I heard you talk about people will be going, there's access 495 and 195, I was thinking of the things I do, going each end and avoiding Fairing Hill, because, you know, I'm going on the ends of 28 there, or Route 6, but Fairing Hill is not a safe road. It's an east-to-west road, so in the morning, you get the sunrise in your eyes on that twisty narrow. In the afternoon, depending on the time, you get it going west, and you're blinded. It's also, with the clearing of habitat, there are gonna be more and more animals. I think I, you may remember, I recounted going down Fairing Hill, and there was a deer on the right side, heading, heading west, deer on the right side, and I could see a huge semi coming at me, and the deer was ready to cross, so I got in the deer's path, stopped my car until that went by, but I could just see this whole thing just exploding in front of me if that deer had leapt out. So, and then there would be about, let's say, two cars each house, times 56 is 112 cars. That's a lot of cars, and I would say that most of the trips will not be to 495, although certainly there may be, but they're gonna be up Fairing Hill because of the grocery shopping and the, you know, the LL beans, and the this and the that, and, and back and forth, so a lot of traffic on that. You may have anticipated that, but perhaps not. Stating the obvious, when you have said it's really beautiful back there, I haven't been there, but I hear from people who have walked it, it really is. Stating the obvious, it hasn't had perhaps 224 people in a three-bedroom house, it would be an average maybe of four, three, that would be the maximum, perhaps, four people a house, and 100, I think it's 27 for the minimum. And that's a lot of people, in conservation land, in trails, that's a lot of people. And I know from living on 17 acres, that when I walk out of the house, and there's a deer, and it goes like this, or the turkeys go like this, I just say, oh, excuse me, and I walk back into the house. Because to honor their habitat, I can't be wandering around, because they, they skadoos. So I would like to know if in designing your cluster, which I understand in some ways, you have taken into consideration environmental concepts of wildlife corridors. I understand that your cluster is closest to accessible roads, and it makes sense for you. I'm wondering if it makes sense for, like, ancient trails that would go through the terrain according to the topography, if it makes sense for the animal trails, the animal corridors that are necessary to keep animals thriving without that kind of corridor, either by traffic or lack of food because the habitat has been segmented, they're not gonna last, and a lot get banished just from the disruption of development. I think, Mr. Churchill, that you mentioned that there won't be, it will, the, the land that, where the houses are gonna be developed, developed will be clear cut, is that correct?
We didn't, Mr. Jim, we didn't state that.
Oh, I'm sorry, through you.
Well, through me, when I walked the property, so maybe this will leave some, some of that fear, when I walked the property with Brad and Conservation, there was an in-depth discussion about not clearcutting the property at all, but instead trying to do their best to save some specimen trees to be left in and amongst the development, because I'm not a fan of that either. I don't, I don't like to see someone come in and say, all right, there's 10 acres of forest land, take it right down to the, to the sand, and then spot a bunch of houses in there and put a pile of trees in there that are that big in diameter, you know, it's gonna be 20 years before they are anything.
I think, Mr. Chair, it was at the Conservation a couple of nights ago that I heard Mr. Churchill say that because of the 30-foot setback from a house, that a tree had to be, for the protection of the house was his determination, that on a lot that size, there would, there would not be trees. And I might have heard it wrong, I can go back and listen, but for clarification from him about what he said would be helpful.
Well, and I agree with that to a point, but I do, I do remember the conversation I had with Brad, and I've had the conversation with John about clearcutting, and I know for a fact, having a very good friend in the insurance business, you can't leave a tall tree within X number of feet of a house because they won't write you homeowner's insurance.
I understand that, and I just passed a house going up Fairing Hill from Four Corners, and all the pines have been cut. I mean, a dozen of beautiful big...
Well, they're, not that it has anything to do with this.
No, but it has to do with insurance.
Insurance.
So what's happening to our forests in multiple ways.
Okay.
All right. And it turns out that, you know, the best water protection is the best animal habitat. So to water, 56 septics. The moratorium on construction doesn't apply here because they're going to be, it's going to be private, septic's public water, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So that concerns me, all of these houses and the septic. I haven't read the stormwater report about how it gets filtered, and so I'm, I'm remiss on that. But it seems like those, that's a lot of septic systems close together, and the potential of one, let's just say rupturing, I don't even know that they do rupture, but then affecting a whole area. Coincidentally, I had never heard of sinks, earth sinks, and then recently, in the last couple of weeks, I've heard of stump burying that, where the stumps, it's not allowed, but the stumps rot, and then the earth sinks. And it can affect the septic system, it can affect the foundation.
If you, if you could, if you could wrap it up.
I'm wrapping it up.
So thank you.
I heard of one from my chiropractor today while she's adjusting me, you know, her aunt who lives in Rivers Edge, apparently that's what they do, there's a 10-foot radius depression, four feet in the middle, and...
That doesn't, that, that doesn't apply to this. It's against zoning to bury stumps on a construction site.
Well, I know it is, and there's a, there's a code for engineers, I know engineers have to sign an oath, but there's a code to protect the health, safety, and welfare. And so I, I want to be sure, because it does happen to cut corners. I just want to put that out there, that that is not allowed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric Lintola, 15 Squirrel Island Road. I just want to, a little clarify, I want to make a little clarification in relation to the endangered species. A lot of projects that have come forward to this board, solar, et cetera, always bring up the fact that these areas are, aren't high priority habitat, because that's stated on the state site heritage, I'm sorry, I don't remember the exact name, and I know the site, and, and that's true. And I don't believe this, and I believe this site is also designated on that site as non-high priority habitat. There are other subcategories to that site that I've presented to the board in relation to the Fairing Hill project, because it's that same thing has always brought forth. It's not a high priority habitat according to the state, and that's what's always presented at every project. The subcategories, which is interesting, it contradicts that to a degree, because that's, there are other sites, and I will, I'll present these back to the board, I'll send them forward again, that show many of these species and exactly where they exist in this area on a map, and it's clear, they do exist. And anybody who goes to that area, if you've been down here, the tracks, we know it's a high habitat area. I don't, what category you want to put it in, but there's a hell of a lot of wildlife out there. I don't know what that means in relation to this project. It's not about stopping the project, it's just making it clear what's, what's, what's out there, let's call it. We know that stuff, all those animals are out there. Sorry. So, and this is just gonna get worse as we come down, go down the road. More developments, more subdivisions, and we're gonna be back in here, and there're gonna be more people bringing these same facts up. Now, they've made good intentions studying the water areas, et cetera. That pond, there's no barrels, there's no, you know, pesticides, whatever. But here, then, there's really no, I don't know what you would do now to prove that it is a habitat area of these animals, and what, what that would mean in relation to how many of this and how many of that. There's no report, there's no agency you can go to, really, unless you get the state down here to come down here and walk the place and take their measurements, do their, whatever it is, to say, okay, there are these amount, there are these, this is a habitat, high habitat. And it is. I'm just trying to make that clear, because I just always hate when I hear the point, the state declares it's not a high habitat area, so therefore the project can go through. That bothers me. And then that's why I'm here, and others, I hear it, to say, in many cases, that's not true, and this place, this site, is inundated with wildlife. Whatever that means, whatever you want to do with it, I just want to make that clear. And I will send that in... And I will send that information again, too, that is also on the state site, that does show that, and on the maps, where these, and some of these endangered species are threatened to exist.
When you do send that, please send it to the planning office.
Yes, absolutely, always.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Papalardo, Ferring Hill Road. Thank you for bringing up questions that I had difficulty in going through the entire plan, and I'm not an engineer, to figure everything out. I could not find the traffic study. That would be appreciated. And in regards to the environmental impact assessment, what the other place, Prime Engineering or whatever their name is, Lightship, they didn't do that. They did a site plan review. They did an environmental assessment for the site, looking for hazardous waste, pesticides. We do that on the land trust. Any properties we look at, you'd have to get an environmental site assessment. They did an environmental site assessment, phase one and phase two, which was great. But they did say in their, you know, they didn't do any subsurface. If something's buried, they haven't found it because they didn't look for it. That aside, I don't see an environmental impact assessment. We're talking, following the previous speaker, all the animals that are out there. There is no environmental impact statement. If there is, I don't know where it is.
Well, you asserting it, Carl did question it, Brad does say that it exists, so it's going to be on us to find it, and if we can't find it, then we're going to ask for one.
Okay. Because I thought they referred to it being in the prime engineering report.
Prime engineering, no. Prime engineering had nothing to do with this project.
Lightship, it's Lightship. And they didn't refer, that was my question, Kathy.
Lightship. I thought they referred to that, it was in the Lightship report.
That was my question. I said, "Is that where I will find it?"
It's not there. It's a site assessment, not environmental impact.
I know, but I don't think we need to deliberate whether it exists or not until we figure out that it doesn't exist or it does. The question's already been posed.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I have two questions. So what was just said, there was 20 test pits done and sampled, four monitoring wells done and sampled, pond samples and soil samples in the pond. So that was done in that 21E assessment. So just so you know.
I have no doubt when it comes to ferreting out information that if it exists, Carl will find it. If it doesn't exist, he will be the first to tell you.
I was saying that was in the 21E, because someone said that we didn't do any soil testing, but the Lightship did do soil testing.
You look like you need to say something.
Yeah, just to the point of, you know, the amount of wildlife, the amount of forest, with any project, there's going to be some habitat loss if you're putting in houses. That's basically undeniable, it's a fact of life. You know, the town, in its wisdom, you know, 20-something years ago, passed this cluster development bylaw. And the specific purpose was to shrink lots down from regular zoning so that habitat could be preserved, so that you could sort of have both things side by side. And, you know, you can certainly make the argument that there will be some habitat loss with this. It's indisputable, there's going to be some land cleared, there's going to be houses put up, people are going to live there. And the deer might say, "You know what, I'm going to come eat, you know, your garden up," which they do in my yard with impunity. I need an eight-foot fence to keep the rotten rats with hooves out. But nonetheless, there will be impacts on wildlife, that's undeniable. But again, the citizens of the town, in their wisdom, decided to try to create this cluster development bylaw as a balancing act between the need for people to develop land, for increased populations to have places to live, and all those sorts of things. And they've balanced that against sort of, I guess, what you would call the environmental equities. And the formula they came up with, and, you know, we can debate whether that's adequate or not, maybe it is, maybe it isn't, but the formula at the time was that 50% of your cluster development had to be left alone as open space. And I would just remind the board that we've exceeded that amount by 50%. Now granted, there's going to be a fair amount of land cleared, but there's going to be a hell of a lot of land preserved. And so I think in your analysis of wildlife, of habitat, and things of that nature, I think we've done a pretty good job here of preserving the key aspects of the site, especially the pond. The original subdivision plan, pretty much, it didn't quite encircle the pond, but it was going around at least three-quarters of the pond. And we're keeping well away from the pond, except in one area where, you know, the lots on your maps here that runs from 37 to 41, those are the closest to the pond. 36 is, you know, I don't know what the scale is on here, 36 is there. Everything else has been pushed away from the pond as best as possible. We understand the pond is a key habitat resource, that's where animals go to drink, that's where fish live. Apparently otters are there, too. So the plan has been very respectful of wildlife, I would say. And while I understand that people have concerns about habitat loss, you know, globally, they have it regionally, they have it locally in this part of the state, you know, again, the cluster development concept is designed to sort of ameliorate those kinds of losses, and that's what we've proceeded under here.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience?
Chris Smith, 12 Fellowship Circle, direct to butter to the property. I've lived there 20 years. I have a different vision of that property. To me, it's dirt bikes, it's noise pollution, it's people firing off rounds of ammunition all weekend long. When I saw this property come up for sale, I was going back and forth on, "Are we going to end up with a solar field there now?" Still having the dirt bikes, still having the guns fired. When Mr. Churchill went forward with this project, or was attempting to go forward with this project, his development's smart. Heard that referenced a couple of times, "smart development." 110 acres, I would much rather that than a clear-cut subdivision. So as a direct to butter for 20 years, that's my thoughts and my opinions.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any other hands, is there someone online? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Meg Sheehan, I will be brief. I just want to address the concept and the point that Mr. Titlebaum keeps making, that this is preserving all this impliedly pristine land. What they are clear cutting for the houses is the pristine land. The land they're putting in conservation is basically either unbuildable wetlands, the gravel pit pond, and the strip mined area, as the previous speaker just said, it's a dirt bike track. That's not what the cluster development bylaw was intended to do. It was intended to say, take a 100-acre forested lot, pristine lot with wildlife habitat, and put that, 50% of that, into conservation. This is not preserving pristine habitat for wildlife.
Okay, thank you.
If I might respond to that point?
Quick.
Yeah. Three years ago, there was a proposal in town to take the, another sand pit ironically enough, and turn it into a casino and a racetrack, and that was voted down overwhelmingly. I had the privilege of being stared at by a thousand people who wanted to kill me down on the football field. But during that whole process, the point was made that this was land that was disturbed, it had sand on it, wasn't the most attractive, and it wasn't beautiful. That was what the proponents were saying about it. We were told by this same organization, that this speaker heads up, that, "Well, eventually that will all fill in. That will all have, you know, leaf detritus hanging out there, pine needles, whatever, eventually grass will start coming up." They pointed to areas that had in fact been mined of sand, that were showing almost sort of a meadow aspect. So I don't see how you can have it both ways. I don't see how you can say that, you know, sandy land that's been, you know, stripped effectively can't come back when we were told previously it could come back. And that's my point.
Okay, thank you. I said there was one other person. Okay, sir, you're live.
Thank you. Sandy Slaven.
Thought it was Alan.
Well, well, he's in the other room watching a basketball game.
Lucky man.
Sandy Slaven, I'm here, yes, I am chair of Conservation, yes, I have seen this project for quite a few hearings. I do want to make a point, I have visited the site and I saw a tremendous amount of dirt bike tracks, tremendous amount of shotgun shells, which will no longer be there. But we do have to remember there's a tremendous amount of land south of this water pond that will be saved. Yes, they are going to develop the upland for the 56 units, but they're also saving a tremendous amount of land south of the water pond, which is ideal for habitat, idea for saving our water, et cetera, but yeah, not all of it's going to be clear cut. And I like the idea of saving so much land south of the pond for the animals, because they'll be there to do their drinking and walking and whatever, but yes. I guess my point is, we're never going to be happy with anything that cuts down a tree. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So I think we've gone over quite a bit of stuff tonight. We can move to continue the public hearing. I think we should shoot for the same. I don't know what your schedule looks like, but I know the next meeting coming up is packed already. Meeting after that is town meeting. So I would entertain a motion that we continue the public hearing for 15-23, Sarah John Realty LLC until the May 13th.
Are we going to have to push Ferring Hill to the 13th as well? How busy, or do we think they'll even be ready for that?
We won't know until we reach out to them. But I don't want to push them out in anticipation of Ferring Hill.
No, no, I'm just trying to figure out how busy that meeting's going to be. Okay.
Right now, it's only, we've only got two, so.
Mr. Chair, can I ask, does this board have any opinion on this middle deadline? So do we have to deal with this in two weeks or four weeks, with a submitter the night before, the Thursday before? Is new comments, and then you're going to say we have to address them, and then another continuance?
I would think, well, anything that gets submitted at some point in time has got to be discussed and acted on, but to your point, I hate the 11th hour thing, too. So I would suggest that we do not consider or address anything submitted to the planning office any later than the Monday prior. So that doesn't mean we won't have to talk about it at some point in the future, but at least for that evening, it'll be, if we didn't see it before the Monday prior, so whatever that date would be, then it's not going to come up for discussion that night.
Thank you.
That goes for both sides of the fence. May 13th. We have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Mike Baptiste, all in favor. Mike? Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We'll see you on the 13th. Oh, yeah. Next up is the 24-23, Town of Wareham. Before we get started, folks, I just need five. Okay. Thank you for accommodating me. Next up is 24-23, Town of Wareham, special permit for site plan review. Wareham Water Pollution Control at 6 Tony's Lane.
So hello, I'm Mark Drainville with GHD, this is Patrick Boggs with GHD. We provided a submission on behalf of the Town of Wareham Sewer Department. It's a site plan review application for a stormwater permit for a phase-two upgrade of the water pollution control facility. We had an original hearing at the end of January. I'm invited back today.
Okay. I wasn't here for that hearing, but I did watch the video and signed the appropriate paperwork with the clerk. If I remember right, there was talk about a peer review and a 53G account to fund such?
So I believe where things landed was going to be done internally, internal review by the town.
Okay.
No, no, we never approved that.
We didn't. There was talk they wanted to go that route, but the 53G was, still had to be created.
But we didn't approve an internal review.
No, that conversation happened after the fact. No, that conversation happened after the fact. That's.
It's never been presented to the.
I, let me get my, pass my thought.
Wait, but he presented that as a fact.
Yes, let me get past my thought.
Okay.
Okay. So the conversation at that time was a 53G account to be established and a peer review done by Alan and Majors. The sewer commissioner, if I remember correctly, Mr. Pigeon, asserted that the town wanted to save some money by having Mr. Menard do the reviews. That was, that was the assertion made to me. The question that I had was, was Mr. Menard a registered or licensed engineer? At which point, the question, the answer was no. So whether it be a review done by Mr. Menard or a review done by Alan and Majors, where's the review?
Wait, but we would have to approve, not using our.
Correct, and that, that was going to be the subject of tonight's discussion.
Okay. Well, none of, this is all news to me.
It came as a, one email and one phone call to my cell.
Okay.
So, Michael, I got a question. Mr. Menard can approve this, you said?
Well, that was the assertion, and I didn't agree with it. Yeah. No, that, that was my assertion to Mr. Pigeon.
He's not qualified.
No, I agree 100%.
And it sounds like the fox watching the chicken house.
Yeah, I agree.
And we've had problems with the sewer. We, we should not do anything untoward with moving the sewer project forward, given the history of this facility.
So we got, I guess my question to, I'm sorry, your name again?
It's Mark Drainville.
My question to Mark is, regardless of whether we agree with Mr. Pigeon's assertions or not, we don't have a peer review in front of us by anybody. So there's, what are we discussing tonight?
So I guess we're struggling to figure out how to make that happen. Yeah, I was wondering if the board can provide some guidance on that.
Well, it's simple. You've, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. No, please.
Please.
No.
You go ahead.
No.
You fund the 53G account, which Mr. Cudero, I believe, has given an estimate for. Is that correct?
Has it been funded yet, Sonia?
It has not. I just actually received the cost estimate today. There was some back and forth, as you know.
Okay.
So that's finally situated.
Yeah, okay. So.
The applicant doesn't get to decide how they do this. Or if they dispute our finding, then it has, I guess has to go to appeal, which they can do.
So how do we move forward?
I would say, I mean, we have, we have the design somewhere. I would say, going back to the conversation that I had with Mr. Pigeon and Mr. Buckland, is we fund the 53G account. We get a cost estimate from Mr. Cudero for the peer review for the site plan. And then he conducts the peer review, and then we discuss his findings at the next meeting.
Were you aware of that?
Yes, we were really clear.
If you were clear.
Oh, you were 100%, because I watched the video, and they told you exactly what I just told you.
Okay, so we've been working through the sewer commission, and we will, so I just want to make sure I understand. So funding the 53G account, we provided a W9.
So I have received a W9. I mean, I have spoken to Sarah Greenberg. She's, I'm, I should be receiving the funds within the next day or two. Again, there was just some back and forth regarding, and I think Scott is a certified engineer. I think there was some agreement in site plan review being done by him on the site, but obviously that's up to you guys. So I think there was some talk going back and forth about that portion, but everything's been handled. So I have received a W9. The funds should be coming within the next day or two. We just received the cost estimate.
Okay.
So it's in the works.
It may be confusing because it's a town issue, but it still has to have the same process as anybody else would.
Understood. We're not trying to get around anything. I guess we provided the W9 to the planning department, and I guess.
But we, we also understand there's a sense of urgency, and we've now lost six weeks.
Right, you know, we've burned two, two meetings and accomplished nothing, basically. So who's the project manager? I mean, does this project have a project manager?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, we're managing it, yes. I guess I wasn't quite sure what, what else was needed to get a peer review.
I did, there's probably going to be quite a bit more detail that goes, that happens down the road. It, it sounds like you might need some guidance, based on watching the last meeting and then being in this one. It, it feels a little bit like you're fighting outside your weight class for a better way of putting it.
Yeah, I mean, this is a special permit, a site plan review. There's other requirements besides stormwater. I mean, we're not, and, and I think you had some questions at the last thing. We're not looking at the design of the internals of the plant. We're not.
That's right, that's.
We have no intention to go there. We're looking at the zoning regulations that we're asked to review.
Okay.
I mean, is that, that's what we said, right?
Yep.
So it sounds like you have, you have the cost estimate from the 13th, and you have the W9, so I guess that that should be able to.
So once the funds are in place, Alan and Majors can do their peer review. They'll give you the results as well as us, and then we'll just, we'll discuss the results and any actions that need to happen on your part to meet zoning.
All right.
Okay, being a.
It's the public hearing.
Public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this project? Online? Okay, having seen no one and hearing no one, I would entertain a motion to. I don't want to stick this on the 13th. I mean, they've already lost a ton of time. The next meeting is, I wish I hadn't forgotten.
27th. 14, I'm just adding 14 to 13.
Phil, do you think that you would have the peer review done in time for the 27th?
Yes, yes.
Awesome, thank you. So I would entertain a motion that we move 24-23 Town of Wareham Special Permit for Site Plan Review to the next scheduled meeting for April 27th.
May 27th.
May, May 20, no, not May.
May, yes, May.
May.
April 22nd is town meeting.
Next one's already booked.
Is booked, April 22nd is town meeting. May 13 is full, and May 27.
Yeah, all right, well, I guess you got all the time in the world on this one, Phil. Entertain a motion to move.
Wait, before we do that, recognizing how critical the sewer project is, are there deadlines that this is going to put at risk? I'm asking.
No, that's a good question.
Because we could do an off-cycle meeting if we had to.
If we need to, yes.
There are, yes, there are deadlines.
What might those be?
I'm sorry?
What might those be?
We are, this is one of a couple of permits that are outstanding. Doing, doing it as soon as a third-party review is available would be appreciated, but it's up to the board.
No, but what deadlines are you up against that this puts at risk, if any?
So the project is supposed to be signed up with a contractor by June 30th. Like I said, this is not the only permit that's outstanding. There's a state permit also that's outstanding. We will, we are in a position to see, we're going to have to seek an extension anyway, but we're just trying to get the permits as soon as we can.
Okay, then what I'm hearing is we're not.
We're not.
We're not going to screw anything up. You, you just want to move it along as quick as you can.
To be honest, at two, we'll probably have all the other permits well within two months. So, I mean, if you can do one off-cycle, it would be appreciated.
We're good.
Yeah, no, I think we'll stick to the 27th.
That was just my question.
The 27th is memorial day.
Ah.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you. I just added 14 to 13 and came up with a date, that's all.
See, there's always someone to save our bacon.
She's done it more than once.
You could do it the week before.
I was going to say, you want to do the week of the 20th?
Yeah.
Everybody okay with that? I don't know.
I, I may be not available at that point, but.
Okay, well, we could always remote you in if we have to.
Nancy, is there anything happening on the 20th that I'm not aware of?
Okay, so. We'll do an off-cycle for May 20th. So entertain a motion to move 24-23 Town of Wareham Special Permit for Site Plan Review to the Off-Cycle Planning Board Meeting of May 20th. A motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Mike Baptiste. All in favor? Mike?
Aye.
Jane? Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We'll see you on the 20th. Hopefully, we'll be all squared away. Thank you. All right, thank you.
Entertain a motion to adjourn?
Oh, no.
Non-debatable, if a second.
He's only playing with you. Don't let him hurt your feelings. All right. Next up.
Where I'm moderator down at Cape, I always say, all those opposed, remain.
Yep. Next up is, oh, I got to read this one in. This is a new public.
Yes, you have to read the. So you talked, we'll talk after.
This is what you should be worrying about when we're talking about trees. All right.
When did this come in?
What's that?
When did this all come in?
Beginning of the month.
Yeah, this has been in for a little bit. Here's all the paperwork while I, while I read it into the, so the record.
Oh, February.
Okay. Notice of public hearing. Wareham Public, Wareham Planning Board will hold a public hearing on March 25th, 2024, at 6:00 PM in the Room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571. To consider petition 4-24 for special permit for site plan review, requirements of Article 15, Section 1520 of the Wareham Zoning Bylaws to Grace Lighthouse Fellowship, PO Box 1, Wareham, Mass. Proposing to place modular buildings on engineered piers to be used as a church located at 2703 Cranberry Highway. Assessors map 133, lots 1,000 B1 and 1,000 C in the CG zoning district. Read into the record, Wareham Planning Board, Michael King, Chairman. First notice was made on March 7th, 2024. Second notice, March 14th, 2024. Would make a motion to open. Now, we'll do that afterwards. Let me just check this. We have all the registered mail, but we don't have the list that go, that goes against it.
What do you mean, the butters list?
Yeah.
The butters list is in here.
It's in the application.
It was, I read it, I read it online. I read the online version.
It's not in the folder. If you saw it online, I'm good.
Wait, it should be here. Mike?
Okay. Welcome. Sorry, sorry for the late hour, but it is what it is, I guess.
It is what it is. We understand, and given the late hour, we'll be as direct and brief as we can. My name's Mike Ford. I'm an attorney with offices down in Howard, on the Cape. I'm here representing Grace Lighthouse Fellowship, the owner of the properties, both lots, and the Grace Lighthouse Church. With me is Sean Riley. Sean is a registered site engineer. He's with Coastal Engineering, which is now Ty &amp; Bond Engineering. And Jen Crawford, who's done the land management plan that was part of the application. I should also tell you, Mr. Chairman, that Pastor of the Church is here, as are a number of the members of the congregation, all with obviously a keen interest in the application. I received about an hour before the meeting, the notice about 4453G. Hadn't seen that before then. And so I guess my first question is, we're prepared to give you a full presentation tonight. We have our team here. We'd like to do that. But we understand, and I've been listening as the evening has gone along, and particularly that last hearing that was before you, although I think we're distinguishable from that, because in that one, you didn't have any stamp on any plan. There were no engineered plans. We do have one. In our case, the church resources are slim. They started here in 2019 when they bought these lots. They've been utilizing on six-month permits from the town, a tent that you've probably seen on the site. That took them through COVID. They're now in kind of Phase 2 of their long-term plans, where they have an opportunity and indeed have under agreement to purchase these modular buildings. They were used at another location, and they've now become available. They have a finance contract with those modular buildings, which has time increments in it and costs them more money the longer it goes. And so they're trying very much to expedite matters and to frankly, use their resources wisely as we go forward. So they learned for the first time tonight, we probably should have known that, that it's your standard practice to have these peer reviews. But I'm asking you, in this particular case, where there is a stamped plan, it's fairly straightforward. We also have the architect here, Kurt Raver. Kurt has stamped his plans with respect to the modular buildings, and we have the landscape management plan. Whether it's a given, Mr. Chairman, that the board will definitely require the peer review in our case. We're happy to make a presentation before you weigh in on that, because you may want, you may want to hear that before you weigh in on that. But if that's the situation, then maybe we want to proceed in a different fashion tonight.
I don't see a problem with hearing a presentation, knowing full well that you're going to have to go through a peer review.
We've often heard the introductory presentation before, before the peer review has been conducted.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, by all means.
But is the peer review a given? It's just something you don't.
Right, but any, anything that involves a site plan review or a special permit and has any kind of, of site work, it's got to go through a peer review, just to make sure that the, the site is, is prepared accordingly. So yes, it will go through a peer review.
Okay. So that being established, let me start, as you indicated in the notice. This is for site plan review. I think what I'll do to kind of save time, given the hours, I'm going to go right to Sean Riley, site engineer, and Mr. Chairman, have him walk you through the material elements of the plan.
Mr. Chair, before we, to the applicant, this is a site plan review and a special permit.
Exactly.
Okay, you said site pla, it's very important, because we've had some applicants who don't understand that there are two different parts to the permit. And it, they're very important distinctions, and it's caused some angst for some of our applicants. So as long as you understand there's site plan review, which is us advising you on the constraints, but the special permit is the thing that actually you need to proceed.
The site plan special permit, we understand that.
Yeah, okay. I just, only because you said site plan review, and I want it. We've had, we've had a lawyer who kept saying that, because he was trying to build a case, that that's the only thing he was presenting.
We're not. We understand it. We know we have to meet the elements of both of those.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Mike, for the, the introduction. Sean Riley, professional engineer with Coastal Engineering. As Mike said, we were acquired by Ty &amp; Bond earlier this year. So you're going to see maybe some correspondence come in throughout. some correspondence come in throughout the process from Ty &amp; Bond. So just to be clear on that. If you would look at the first page of the plan set, the cover sheet actually gives a... An aerial overview of what's there now. As Mike said, they've been utilizing the site on a temporary basis on a 180-day permit to use the facility seasonally as a place of worship. With that understanding, we've looked at the entrance and access, and we understand your bylaw suggests that we try to keep the streets, the accesses at the same point as accesses across the street, where this is in a location that has been there, not only for this use, but previous use in this location. It made sense. There weren't any traffic reports within this area, and the site distance, as you can see by the site triangles on our site plan, is more than adequate for this location. So it only made sense to keep that access point in that same location. It also works well with utilities that are in the area, as far as utility poles and accessing around those poles. So if I could point your attention to Plan CM 101, which is the fifth page of the set, I'll just walk you through the design and the layout of the project. As Mike said, there is a modular building that is gonna be comprised of a number of smaller buildings built into one. It's essentially a 40-by-60 building that we're gonna be doing retrofit remodeling on the inside. That is positioned on the westerly side of the property. The access is on the northeastern side of the property. It comes into a L-shaped gravel parking area, which has more than adequate 24-foot-wide travel lanes entering into the site from north to south. We have four handicap-accessible spaces. They're all van-accessible spaces that meet the requirements needed for the space count that we're providing. The... It's unique in this town that you don't have a calculation for places of worship. So we actually went to a nearby town, Middleborough, and took a look at their parking count for church use, and it was one space for three occupants plus one per two employees. So we took that calculation and applied it to this site. There are currently between 80 to 100 parishioners as part of the congregation. Rather than using that, they're looking to obviously increase their community. And so we took the occupancy, the maximum occupancy load for this building, which was 196 occupants with two employees. So we use that as our basis for the parking count. And so from that, there's 68 spaces required. We've provided 53 spaces within that L-shaped parking lot, and we've accommodated 22 additional overflow parking in an informal gravel parking lot that we're showing as to the south, where you see the Lot 1 designation. So there are 22 spaces as part of the overflow, which would accommodate those special events, the upcoming Easter and Christmas holidays. As we know, you get a little... They get surges within those areas. So rather than building out, you know, the full parking lot for 68 spaces, we felt it more appropriate to go with the 53 in the main and then just have an overflow area for those additional spaces.
Before you leave the parking, let me just make one comment. We did have a referral letter from the building commissioner on an earlier plan, very similar to the one that's here, but it was in different locations on the building, where he opined that a religious use under the Wareham zoning bylaw would require one space per 150 square feet. If we use that for this size building of 4,566 square feet, and this is all in my narrative within your application, we'd only need 31 spaces. We just didn't seem to think that rang true, given our experience, and that's why we went out, grabbed another town's zoning ordinance that had a table of use regulations.
Mr. Chairman, because I had a question on this point. So you're saying, and I didn't actually do the calculations, if we use the Inspectional... Director of Inspection Services recommendation, you actually require fewer spaces?
Right. Only 31... Only 31 spaces.
Okay. Because I was doing back... I thought it would be more. Okay.
No, he said one space per 150 square feet.
Square feet, yeah.
Okay.
So if you take that without building 4,566, it's 31 spaces.
Okay. So you answered... You answered one of the questions I was gonna have later on.
So we're going more than double that, because we just didn't see that.
You should... Make sure you have sufficient spaces for your parishioners.
No, we don't. We're looking to do that. And as you know, being a religious use under 48, Section 3, we're in exempt use, and therefore the use is allowed. But there's another provision in 48, Section 3, that says that towns can only apply reasonable dimensional regulations. We thought, in this case, however, reasonable was more than what the commissioner was telling us, and that's why we came in with more. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you for... Because I did have that on my list of questions.
So you'll notice on the... As you come into the entrance, along the west side of the first bank of parking, there is a six-foot-wide proposed concrete sidewalk. The sidewalk's elevated six inches above the parking lot's surface. We have two handicap-accessible ramps with walkways that lead up to the building, with two handicap-accessible ADA ramps leading into the building, with also a third egress on the south side of the building into the parking lot. Both of those walkways are lighted with bollard lighting, and I believe we provide fixture cuts for not only the bollard lighting, but the site lighting. We provided a photogrammetric plan for the site lighting to show that there wasn't any egress of lighting off of the property. And we also provided the lighting fixtures for the parking lot as well. The setbacks, you'll notice that the building requirements are a minimum 20-foot setback to the front and 15-foot setback to the sideline, but also you have a second requirement, that the building can be no more than 80 feet from the front street setback. So we've met that criteria for siding the building. We've met the criteria for the side and rear setbacks of the building. Thanks, Mike. And the maximum building footprint is 30,000 square feet, and we only have 4,700 maximum... I'm sorry. Maximum building coverage is 40%. We only have 4.6%. The maximum impervious surface requirement is 60%. We have 42%, but we've included all of the gravel parking within our impervious count. So we have far less actual fully impervious coverage, but wanted to show you that even with the gravel parking lot, we're only at 42%. And then we have a minimum impervious surface coverage of 30. We're at 47%, and we haven't included some of those areas within the grass-lined swale, as sometimes those become inundated with floodwaters. So we didn't count those as pervious areas as well.
Mr. Chair, on this point, through you to... How did you count the tent?
The tent is on top of pavement, so that's impervious.
Okay, so you've covered that as impervious.
That's correct.
And you counted in your building's square footage as well?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep. Building sidewalks, there's a roofed pergola, as well as a shed that's on the property that we'd be looking to relocate. Those were all included within that coverage calculation.
Seems like a lot, but the lot areas, the two lots combined, are 102,607 square feet, and that's why that comes in at that 4% number.
So as far as refuse, we have a trash enclosure that is head-in as you come into the property straight down. You'll see that that is enclosed with a fence enclosure to screen it, so it's not visible from the street line. That is on a concrete pad with bollards. You'll also notice that we've provided wheel stops where this is a gravel parking lot to designate the spaces, because you're not gonna be able to stripe that gravel parking lot. So that's how we're designating those spaces. If you turn to page 6, which is CG 101...
We have to go backwards.
Sorry. So that's basically our grading plan, and we utilized a county drainage style coming off of the gravel parking areas into a grass swale. So essentially, the stormwater sheets off of the gravel area through a peystone edge strip filters through that and then into the grass-lined swale, where there is a proposed catch basin with an elevated grate, so that we're trying to infiltrate a majority of the stormwater directly into the ground through the grass swale, and then with an overflow that goes to a subsurface recharge basin located on the right-hand side... On the right-hand side swale. This is a relatively flat lot, so there isn't a lot of relief in here. There isn't gonna be a lot of grading in here. Really, the grading that we're doing is to create positive drainage towards our swales to... In an attempt to keep all of the runoff on property. The... You'll notice in the front of the property, along the front street line, we've created a berm, an earthen berm, which Jen will walk through with the landscape portion of the project. But that's shown in the grading to the north along the property line. And again, full handicap accessibility throughout the site. As far as our utilities, they are shown on Sheet CU 101, which is this next sheet. So we have onsite sewage disposal system, which is a basic Title V system with a two-compartment septic tank and leaching field. We're not in a Zone 2. There aren't any requirements for nitrogen reduction. And again, we've maxed out the sizing of the system to meet the maximum occupancy of the building, but we've also upsized the septic tank for future growth, so that if they do, hopefully in the future, come up with the funding for a more permanent building, that we have the septic tank sized to accommodate that additional use in the future with a slight upsizing of the field. That should be...
Yeah, so...
...it for the... For the site. I'll open it up to any questions on the site unless you want to jump right into the landscape screening portion of it.
Do you rather us complete the presentation and just give them?
Yeah, please.
So Jen Crawford will walk you through the land management plan to meet some of the bylaw requirements on...
We're at 10 o'clock. So I'll put it to the board for a vote to continue past the hour of 10.
I move that we continue the discussion past 10.
Do we have a second?
And we're making good progress.
It shouldn't take much longer.
We'll try and... You don't have to rush. It's just a formality.
All right.
Nice way of a motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett. All in favor, Sheriff?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
I know it's past your bedtime, buddy.
No, no. This is a good cause.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, please. Sorry for the interruption.
No problem.
Well, I appreciate you not making me come back on another night to give you a presentation. And I also apologize. I am fighting a cold. That's what happens when you have three young kids. So I'm a professional landscape architect in the state of Massachusetts, and I was asked to be a part of this team for this very wonderful project. I went through, Mr. Schultz, I believe, earlier in the night you termed your landscape portions of your bylaw as nuanced, maybe? So yes, I went through Article 10 and found those nuances. So in terms of the landscape plan, it is fairly simple. For many of the screening requirements, we are choosing to utilize much of the fencing that exists. Much of that fencing is on some of those neighboring properties. Where that fencing does not exist, you will see on both the civil plans as well as the landscape plan, we are calling to add that fencing for those portions. With the landscape berm that Mr. Riley mentioned for the frontage section, we have included street trees while being mindful of the sightlines, as well as utilizing existing trees that are currently there within that area. We have worked very closely with the civil engineers on the grading of the site in general, as well as that landscape berm, to make sure that we are not encroaching on any of the root systems of the few existing trees that are on this property. The landscape berm on the frontage side, we've supplemented with street trees, as well as native grass ground cover and shrubs. With the sidelines of the property, most often, rather than working as a landscape architect, I actually work as an environmental consultant. So we were able to give you, in our narrative, a description of the existing vegetation that was there. And from an ecological standpoint, I understand you are not the Conservation Commission, but because I work most closely with the Conservation Commission, it's hard for me not to comment on native species present versus invasive species or aggressive species. Pleasantly enough, this large parcel has very few invasive species, and it actually contains, especially around the edges, quite a number of seedling and sapling native tree species, as well as native shrub species. So rather than allowing... No offense to civil engineers, but rather than allowing the civil engineers to completely grade everything on the site, as I said, we work closely with them to pull the limits of construction and limits of grading in as tight within the site as they could, so that those native tree species and shrub species that are existing, albeit small at this time, they are existing, and we did flag them all, so that they can be preserved during this process, and they can act to supplement the fence screening that either exists or that we would like permission to add. So those seedling and saplings were not surveyed. Me and my staff went to the property and did a pretty exhaustive search, and we did include them on our landscape plan as part of the supplemental vegetation for those screening buffers. We also included with our landscape plan and our second sheet set, hopefully, you will agree, multiple directives to contractors to not only preserve them, but to test soils after construction for overly compact soils. I find that that is the... As a landscape architect, I'm often asked to put sites back together that have been driven over hundreds of times by construction vehicles. And what many don't understand is that no matter what plants I put there, whether they're appropriate or not, the soils are over-compact or they're not appropriate, I'm not gonna get anything to grow there. Nothing, period. So to that effect, we have put many site preparation and vegetation protection notes on our plan, as well as provided details for de-compacting soils if they should remain inappropriate for any planting, even including the Nomo Fescue lawn that we are proposing on our front. We are also utilizing for this project, not only for budget and efficiency, but also because, again, I work a lot with conservation commissions, we are utilizing short grass-prairie mixes as well as tall grass-prairie mixes to heal the site in once construction is complete. They are extremely well-performing in these dry, sandy soils that this site has, which is backed up by all the boring logs for the septic system. And being a Midwesterner at heart, I have an affinity for short grass-prairie. I was raised in Minnesota, so... But not only will they perform well in these soils, but they will do a lot of work at any sort of stormwater infiltration within the grass swales and the basins that have been designed by the engineers, as well as provide not only wildlife habitat in the form of pollinator, pollinator species in the mix, and forage and cover. and forage and cover, but why not? They're beautiful. So I am going to leave my presentation at that, and.
Thank you, Jen. So, Mr. Chairman, that's our presentation. We're all here to answer questions. And as I say, Kurt Raiber, the architect, is here as well. If somebody had a question for him, why he's here, this is the night he's here. So if you have one, please ask it, if there's time. And we appreciate the board giving us an opportunity to make this presentation. Before you deliberate and decide where you're going from here, and we know that part of that is, because we have an estimate for the 53G, and my understanding is the church is going to go forward with that and, yes, and get that check over for, for that amount. Anything you could do, and I was listening to your schedule as I sat here tonight, and I don't envy any of you to expedite that. We do have those contractual problems with interest rates on the, on the modular buildings. And so any consideration you could give us in moving us to, along on your schedule, which seemed very tight to me, we would appreciate it.
Understood. I always like to start with you because you're the most thorough.
I'm not thorough, I'm just.
Yeah, you are.
Pedantic. That's what you, you guys decided, great, okay, thank you. First of all, I want to compliment you. I, I thought your presentation was very well done. And I did read the online versions of these and thought your preparation was well done. I also was pleased to note that you said you did a review with the planning office.
We did.
Prior to submitting your application, which I, I'm pleased to note, because we've been pressing our applicants to do that, to make their applications better. I'm surprised to note, though, that the 53G account did not come up during that review, just to note.
It didn't, I, I can't say, you know, because I'm trying to remember whether Ken may have mentioned that you may have to do one, but it certainly didn't come out as startling as it was tonight.
I'm thanking you for doing it, I acknowledge you, and I think it shows in the preparation tonight. I have a couple of questions. The land, I had some questions about the landscape plan, which you answered. I had questions about the building inspector and parking, which you answered. Moving on, you're keeping the canopy.
The tent.
However you prefer to refer to it, which I see every time I drive up and down. A question, and this may be for the planning office. Are there, I don't believe we have any bylaws regulating canopies. So I didn't find any standard against which to test your plan. So through the chair to Mr. Buckland, is there anything I should be looking at for canopies?
Ken is no longer in the meeting.
Through, through you to Josh.
There are no regulations that I'm aware of.
Okay.
I've only been looking at them for a short period of time.
I, I went through our by, I didn't see anything.
Like you, I didn't see anything either, but I was going to let you say that first before I told you that was what we found or didn't find, as the case may be. But the town, through the building commissioner's office, has been requiring them to go back every six months. He does an inspection, they look at the tent, and goes forward.
Okay.
That's the process we've been following to date.
Okay.
To build on that, so right now, your, your permit is for six months.
Correct.
And then you break the tent down, you come back, you put it back up.
Correct.
And so with this project, the tent stays up 12 months?
No.
You're still going to take it down?
We follow the same process.
I think the commissioner has said, no, it's still a, it's a six-month permit, you gotta.
Really? Okay, that's interesting.
Yeah.
Okay, so there is, oh, so there is building code, but there's not zoning?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what we're dealing with, yeah.
Please come up.
The previous building commissioner.
Introduce yourself.
Don Monroe, I formerly worked with coastal engineering, but I'm also the liaison between the church and the construction or engineering firm. So working with Dave Requena originally, when he was the building commissioner, one of the things he required was that a certified tent erector be used to oversee whenever we take the tent down or bring the tent up. And we do have someone who's actually a high school reunion person of my, a friend of mine, owns a tent company in Marion, Massachusetts, I'm sorry, Mansfield, Massachusetts, who does come down at the beginning of the erection of the tent and is also present when we take the tent down.
Thank, thank you for that clarification. That, that answers that question. You did mention that you work closely with the Conservation Commission. We do need a determination from the Conservation, Conservation Commission whether there are any considerations for this site or not. Could be a notice of non-determination, but we need a formal statement.
Just, just a letter or something from them. We don't believe there's any jurisdiction, but what you're saying is you need to hear that from Conservation.
Yes.
I'd love to talk to Conservation, but I don't think it would be necessary.
He's, he's right there.
I'm right here. I figure by law states you need an order of conditions or a determination of applicability.
Right.
So I'll need a submittal of an RDA.
Oh, wow.
Looking at the, though, it doesn't look like we have.
I thought so as well, but we just need to tick it off.
How do we file an RDA when there is no jurisdiction?
The RDA is just that, it's asking the commission if there is jurisdiction or not.
All right, okay. There's another piece.
We'll get it done.
Thanks, and that's just ticking that box.
That's easy.
You had a very thorough lighting plan. I couldn't, and this is one of the things Phil would normally tell us. Is it night sky compliant?
Dark sky.
Dark sky, dark sky compliant. I didn't see that, where it stated that anywhere.
No, it is.
But is it stated in there somewhere?
We will state, we will state it.
Thank you.
For the record.
Thank you. My next thing was about Article 10, which you addressed quite nicely, so thank you. Next item, traffic impact. I know that most of the time it's not used, but on Sundays and certainly high holidays, have, have you done a, and, and there is a requirement for at least a traffic impact statement, whether it requires a traffic study or not. This is also a state highway, so I don't know.
Can the statement be from the applicant? I mean, we discussed that at some of our early meetings with your planner, Ken, and given the access and.
Yeah, we have a traffic group in-house that we could provide a letter.
I think.
Well, at least, we'll start with that, and then.
Yeah.
One of the things that the peer review would determine, the adequacy of that statement.
Okay, so we need to get that right away because the group's coming on.
Yep.
Yeah, but I, I know that most of the time, there's nobody there. But, you know, Sundays, Sunday mornings, assuming services on Sunday, I don't, you could have a couple hundred people coming in and out in a very short time. I don't know if that's a problem or not, but.
We'll, we'll address that in the statement.
Thank you. We need an environmental impact statement, I didn't see one in. That's just a bylaw, I can refer you to which bylaw it is, but I think there's a requirement for that. And the last question, your catch basins, your catchments on the outside of the. I, I'm not going to get the right term. Oil separators and all of that are included in the catch basins?
Yes, we have the hoods within the catch basins.
Okay, so you're going to be able to separate out the, the oils and the.
Yep.
Because it's, you got vehicle parking, they drip.
Yeah, and it has a four-foot sump.
Yep, okay.
There are all details on the plans.
I'm just, I didn't, when I was trying to read this plan on my iPad and couldn't always catch that. Those were my questions, Mike.
Very pedantic. Sam? Sherry?
I'm, I'm with Carl, I thought your presentation was really good, which is a lot to say at this hour.
And it was easy to read, I thought it was well put together, I don't know.
It was.
I don't know why, but.
Compared to, actually compared to.
You could always waive the 53G.
Well, one of the things is if you don't, if, if you've done a good job, the 53G, I mean, even though we have an estimate.
Right.
If he doesn't use it all, you get the money back.
All right. Well, that's encouraging.
That's it, that's all.
I was gonna, I, I gotta echo your sentiments. It's probably one of the nicer presentations that we've seen in a long time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very detailed. Mike?
They were good understudies, they stuck around a long time. I think it's a great idea, just move it on.
You can get it past Mike, you get it like, it's, it's all, it's all downhill from here.
Has nothing to do with the hour of the evening?
No.
No, it doesn't.
No.
No agent waves going through this site, so, not right now. I'm sure there was.
I actually did have a couple of questions.
Okay.
It was a great presentation, though, so don't get me wrong. My questions are, the, the overflow parking at the back, I don't see the same level of detail for drainage for the, for that back area.
Right.
That it, you've got the gravel at the perimeter that's sort of a filter and it leads to the retention basin or.
So, yeah, so all of that is going to the same location, they're all, it's all directed to the, the two swales. So we do have a high point on the lower left corner of that parking lot.
Yeah, sure, I see.
And it is all directed, the only, really, the only difference is that we don't have a, a drip strip along that left edge, we can easily add one of those along that edge as a, as a, as a filter.
And then the other, the other thing related to that parking area is I don't really see backup areas at the ends of the aisle.
Yeah, we were.
Trying to make it on an overflow, we weren't sure how often it would be used.
Yeah. An informal.
It's just something I noticed. And then the next question is, or my last question is, is more of a sort of overview, 30,000-foot view. Do you see this building as a, sort of a next step from the tent, and there's another step after that?
Yes, there is.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's their long-term plan.
So I'm curious about, I see a very well-developed site, and I, I was not seeing something that would sort of lead to that next step without undoing some of what you are doing with this.
It's really replacing the tent in that area, so really morph to the, to the east.
Yeah.
So that we could utilize the septic system, the parking. You may have to interrupt some of the front walkway.
Okay.
But really, it's just a build off of that to the right, and you could.
I was gonna say, the nature of the, of the project and the, and the owners and the use in general does not lend itself to inefficiencies.
Yeah.
So.
Understood, and, and totally appreciate that, and understand that too, that, that's, that you're trying to be super efficient about it, and that's why I was, of course.
Yeah, so we've looked at the long-term of where we thought that the final building would go, and then we've built around that.
Correct.
We don't know whether that's three to five years, or five to seven years, or.
Hoping five.
Whenever it is.
We're hoping five.
Whenever it is, this team is committed to come back and give you another presentation.
That would be a major, probably a major modification.
I think so.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that might be, yeah.
A good one, though.
That's a bridge we're willing to.
Oh, no, it's a good thing, I mean, it just, just.
When we get there.
Well, having done a lot of work with nonprofits as an architect, I get that, so. Those are my questions.
Question. So now it's all about the time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, well, where this is a public hearing, I would open it up to public comment if there's anybody in the audience or online that wants to, to comment on this project. Sure?
Gabriel King, I'm a member of the Pheasant Ave. I'm all for the project. I think it's great, it's getting developed, it's been just an open space for, I've been there 18 years.
Circus used to go there.
Yep, and my only concerns would be my property line, the water shedding. I, I heard there was going to be a swell, catch basin. What type of catch basin, is it a storm scepter? Where the interior is, I know there's just hoods that you put on catch basins, but is it actually a storm scepter?
Yeah. Do you mind if I share with him?
Like, where could I look at these planes?
Yeah, if you want, I can, I'll meet with you.
Okay.
They're posted on the town website.
On the website, okay.
But Sean may have something he can even give with you tonight.
Yeah. Yeah, I could actually.
Like the lighting, is the lighting up at night?
All, all of this material is on the planning board website.
Okay.
Yeah, you can review it all.
It's labeled as a project, what number was it, 2423? No, no.
No, that's not it.
424. 2423. That was the previous one. This is 424.
All right.
No.
No, that, 2423 was Town of Wareham, this is 424. So there's a, a website, the town website, warehamusa.com, then you go to the planning board, and the projects are lifted, listed on the left side of the blue bar there. You click on this project and all of these documents. Sean, you're supposed to.
Josh just gave him his card, so he's going to get them through it.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak, sir? Lost my agenda.
You lost your what?
My agenda. I've thrown it somewhere.
I'm John Cashman, and I live on Spring Ave, right across the way from the project, and I think it would be a tremendous benefit to the neighborhood. And if you'll take my word for it, as far as the traffic report, when Perry's is open and the church is letting out on a Sunday, I don't see any impact trying to get out of Spring Ave. I mean, you know, everything, everybody usually leaves the church as a staggered traffic pattern. So I, I don't see any problem with the project, and I think it'll be a tremendous benefit to the town.
Thank you for coming out tonight. Thank you for hanging in there, spent a long night for you. Is there anyone else? Anyone online? Okay. Seeing no one and hearing no one, I would. What are we going to do for date? Do we move it to the.
The 20th.
It's really the only choice.
What does May 20th do to your financing schedule?
This is Pastor Day.
Well, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So good to be here, to officially have this opportunity to present. You guys did a wonderful job, this is the A Team for sure, and we appreciate all that they've done. So we had begun this.
Just for the record, who you are.
Yes, my name is David Beggary, and I'm the pastor of Grace Lighthouse Church. We began this process trying to buy these buildings probably one year ago. One of the reasons we did that is because we looked at the extensive cost to even put a structure up. Obviously, through COVID, COVID changed a lot of dynamics for nonprofits. We being a local church, we have been growing, but we've also been adjusting, and we've been pivoting. We purchased the land in 2019 with the hope that we would be able to develop the land pretty quickly. That became sort of cost prohibitive pretty quickly when we realized we're looking at 1.5 million, maybe $2 million, just to even get a structure on this land. By the time we do all the engineering, the wonderful concept of utilizing already existing buildings that once lived on oak bluffs as a multiplex for town offices, which is amazing to me, that they became, they were available. I started to really search prey and really wonder, like, how could we get buildings on this property? That we, that are pretty much, you just add water. They would, you know, they would essentially be ready to be used. So we thought that this process would go far more quickly. And we came up with a, a price that the company, the man was, who owned the buildings was here tonight, had to leave. And he was very reasonable about the cost. So we, we secured funding, we've already raised about $800,000 as a church through all volunteer donations to purchase the land. We own no money on the, we don't owe, we don't have a mortgage on the land. We have a, we just continue to raise money. We have a woman here tonight who collects five-cent cans every single week, thank you, Linda. And those cans and donations and sacrificial donations continue to make this work happen. But we're at a point now where the company that is issuing our mortgage, because we thought we would get here quickly, they said, we, we just can't maintain the rate of 7.5%. We're bumping you up just under eight. And so the sooner the better, and we're just hoping that we might be able to close this process very quickly. The, the buildings are well-constructed, they're ready to be moved in, but we can't do that until the septic's installed, till the, the 49 piers that have to be installed are also there. Then we can close the land so the buildings could be delivered. But everything's tied to the approval in this process.
Pastor, here's the question. The chair just said.
Yep.
Can you do May 20th? It looks like that's their first date.
We'll take.
What does that do to your financing? Just tell them, if, if we can do May 20th, that's what he's offered.
Because we thought this would happen back in the fall, we thought this process would go quickly because they're modulators, they have held this loan, so they're waiting for us to close. I keep telling them, we're about to go before the town, we've been keeping clear communication. I would just say, I think they would work with the 20th, if we can have a sooner meeting. If we can have a sooner meeting, we would take it.
Sounds like if we can do the 20th, I don't know if your peer reviewer can get us something by then so we could respond to it, and maybe you folks could take a vote that night if you were comfortable. If you're all right with the 20th, or...
Certainly, Phil, you could certainly be done with it.
Yeah, he's already given us the thumbs up.
So, would it be, through the chair, would it be, would we be able to work with the consultant to address any of his concerns and have back and forth so that when we came in, we...
Absolutely. We encourage that.
Okay, good.
Just facilitate it through Sonya.
Yeah, yeah.
Where the planning...
I'll correspond, please, through the planning office.
Absolutely. Yeah, so the sooner you fund the account, the sooner we can get started.
We'll fund it tomorrow.
Okay. All right, so...
I think I spoke to Carla Davis today.
Looks like May 20th, okay. So, I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearings for 4-24 Grace Lighthouse Fellowship, special permit for site plan review to the scheduled planning board meeting of Monday, May 20th.
Second?
We have a motion by Carl Schultz, and second by Sam Corbett. All in favor? Mike?
Hi.
Jane?
Hi.
Sam?
Hi.
Carl?
Hi.
And Chair O'Teague.
Thank you for hanging in with us tonight.
Thank you very much for staying late.
Thank you for a nice, clean presentation. It helps.
Do you have anything, Mike? Yes, we have plenty more on the agenda.
Are you up for it?
We have, we have some reports. I have to bring up the Andrade project. I don't know.
If we can keep it somewhat concise, I don't see why not. I'm okay with it. Sherry, you gonna be long-winded?
Are you gonna let me be long-winded?
No.
I'll be short.
What are we gonna do?
What are we gonna do? While Sherry's got reports she wants to give, Carl does have something on Andrade that he wants to discuss.
My only concern is that project, he hasn't come back to us. We gave him a list of requirements.
Mr. Chair? I can't hear you.
Excuse me!
Hello, folks. We're trying to conduct some business.
Our meeting is not over. We're still having a meeting.
Yeah. Other business. Sherry has a report on Serpide activities.
Yes, so, to do this quickly, we have sought assistance from Serpide.
Are you unmuted, Sherry?
I am not, thank you. We've sought assistance from Serpide. It now looks as if we are on at least one path with them toward funding, and this is funding for sort of a review of our zoning bylaws that would take a look at what other towns do, sort of review ours up and down, and would be, it would be done through something called the one-stop shopping, which is sort of an entry point for funding from the state. We'd start with this project, and we would at least potentially be able to get funding for other related projects. So, feeling pretty good about this, and this has all been with the help of Alan Slaven. Carl has done a lot of the work on it, and we're pushing forward on it.
Awesome. Sounds encouraging.
Yeah, yeah. So, that's point number one. Point number two is, I was at the CPTC.
I'll speak. Mike?
I thought you were signaling to me that my...
I sent it over for you so you can keep your binder.
Yeah. I was at the citizen, what is it?
Planner.
Planner.
Training.
Training.
Something.
But, CPTC. Fascinating...
Collaborative? Yeah.
Yes. Fascinating panel on solar energy. People on the panel were an attorney who represents towns in this area, represents towns with solar projects, had pointers on how to write decisions, what the law is. Very helpful. I would like to expand on this at another time when not everybody has been through quite as much as tonight. But the bottom line is, one can make determinations about solar projects that are not approvals. You just have to do it really carefully with the right record and with a decision that supports that determination. So, that was the long and short of it. The, one of the people on the panel is Elizabeth Hurley, who reviews the zoning bylaws passed by towns, including ours. And remember, one of the issues that came up when we got our solar bylaw back was she seemed to be saying that standalone battery storage is the same as solar battery storage, and we basically have to allow all of it. There is some backing up from that position that's happening now, and some litigation on the subject of whether that position is correct. And so, important for us to bear in mind as we're going forward. Final thing is, you know, I chair the Alternative Energy Committee as well, and we would like to offer, to propose battery storage bylaws, standalone and small battery storage bylaws. Part of this is from feedback from our fire department. They're having a lot of difficulty with battery storage that is smaller than what we're seeing in the solar fields, but all over town and used in ways that they're, that they have safety concerns about. So, you know, the Alternative Energy Committee would offer to work with the police, the fire department representatives on the Alternative Energy Project or Committee to bring bylaws back to the planning board.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I know when I was talking with Chris Smith about that, he was, he had a lot of comments, a lot of concerns.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay, cool.
One follow-up on, Jane, I cannot send you emails. So, I, every time I send you an email, it gets rejected. I just can't fix it.
Maybe she's blocked you.
She was gonna say...
I don't know. It doesn't matter. My request is, I went through, and Sherry went through, the existing zoning bylaws, and tried to highlight every single problem, inconsistency, but...
Just to highlight the whole thing.
But what I didn't do is look at Article 6, because three months ago, I sent you an email saying, "Could you tackle and let me know what needs to be looked at in our, where it's inconsistent, where it's..." Just highlight it. I just didn't look at Article 6 because I knew, you knew it better than I could ever figure it out. So, that would be my request there.
Okay. And lastly?
Lastly, the Andrade subdivision off of Great Neck, and it's got a number. I forget what it is.
69?
69.
67?
69 is the address, I think. In any case, they came before us, I think in January, maybe at the, oh, 12/18, that's why. That's what brought it up, the 12/18 minutes. We gave them a list of requirements to meet with Phil. Now, I know, by the way, Phil, I sent an email this morning saying, "We haven't heard back," and then all of a sudden, you're out there doing an inspection, so... But I think he's either close or past his deadline. And we were talking about extensions today. He hasn't filed for an extension. He hasn't come back to us.
But he only has to be substantially started, doesn't he?
But there was another thing that said, "If you're not complete within two years, it expires." So, I'll...
The infrastructure.
It said the subdivision had to be complete.
Okay, I didn't read it that way. I thought it was just the infrastructure.
I thought, and I thought it was that you ought to be into, substantially into construction.
I will send you the thing that I read.
I looked at the covenant today before going out there, and I think, oh, I'm sorry. I looked at the covenant before meeting with Mr. Andrade to confirm, and I think he has to be substantially complete, which he would be.
Okay.
Did he, did he address the list?
Or substantially underway? No, no, he didn't. I actually asked him about that. I said, "You know, we had this list of items that you needed to complete," and he said, "Oh, I'm working towards them. There were delays, et cetera."
All right, well, if he's not gonna expire, I'll go back, and I'll be satisfied with your statement, but I know that we have covenants that expire, like we had the problem with Baypoint, where the, you know, he doesn't have a bond in place, so that's, that's different. But...
Use it in past tense. You mean, he's all settled now? We still have a problem with Baypoint.
I'm, I'm not talking about Baypoint.
We'll be here till midnight if we get into that.
All I, concerned about these subdivisions, like Mr. Tobia, Toby, Tobiah, there's, we, I'll go back and find, but there were four or five subdivisions that we reviewed that I don't know that I've ever seen them come back to complete the project.
Well, most of them don't, Carl. If you look at, at the history, we have one, we have one down to Cremesa Road. They just came before us, and they've been around here for, what, 15 years?
Oh, yeah, that, that was the reservation.
Twins, whatever it was.
But either they have a bond, which you're trying to get us to release bonds, or they have a covenant, which means they can't, or they haven't started construction. So, I...
Mr. Andrade, I think, is probably one of the better builders we have in town.
Yeah.
You know, I don't think we should chastise him because he hasn't got any houses built yet, but he got the road in.
He didn't have the road, he didn't have the road in till very recently.
The road's been, that's what, that's what prompted my discussion.
You're right. The road was there, but not the, not the inspections, the catch basins.
He's probably one of the better guys we've dealt with. I've seen him in 30 years, and I'm not seeing a stick up for him, but that's, that's the way it is. We got other bums that'll walk around here. They do whatever they want to do, and they just blow us off. You know, I don't think that's right, Carl.
Well, there's a, there's a safety net in place where he won't get a building permit until Phil's list is addressed, so that part of it, I'm not worried about.
You know, because like I said, they, they've been great people to work with over the years. You really have.
Well, I don't know him, and I don't have that experience. All I can look at is the requirements of the bylaw, and we have to hold him to the same standard that we hold all the other developers. And we should be holding the other developers to those standards as well.
Well, we want to pick on Baypoint. We want to get out of here. Get the chain of most...
I'm not letting him off the hook. And then the other thing...
He probably gave you a year's membership for free, right, Carl? I don't call for anymore.
I have a plague, Carl. The other, I won't bring it up, but we need to, we need to get back to the solar bonds.
Yes.
What's going on with the solar bonds?
They're still dragging their feet. I mean, my last comment to them, my last email was when they were dragging their feet about the value, and they were going back and forth about how it was calculated. My answer to the lawyer, the woman, was, "We could play this game all day long," I says, "but when the time comes that that expires, we're gonna have inspectional services go out and shut you down." And I left it at that. So, they know where they stand.
Okay. Who, who is, I guess Ken is still, Ken's not on the thing. Who's following up with that?
Ken's sleeping.
Is Ken still following up on that?
He had, he had to leave. He messaged me, and he had to leave. He had to log off. Something had come up in the household. So, I actually, I'm CC'd on that email. Apparently, there's some conflict with the addresses. I mean, I took over these 53G accounts. We have a ton, as we've spoken before. So, some of the addresses, the number...
No, no, we're talking, those are not the bond. We're talking about the decommissioning bonds for the solar project.
The bonds, yeah, right. I apologize. The number isn't tying in with whatever they have.
I think, honestly, Sonya, I think all that was, was, there was a question about how much money was left in the 53G for the project, and the correspondence back and forth, the addresses got swapped off the different accounts. Has nothing to do with the fact that their decommissioning bonds are coming to an end. They're two different things.
I appreciate, thank you. But no, at five years, we have the right to review the bond and reestablish the value. We now have a new baseline for what the bond level needs to be, and they're resisting.
Right, that's, that's it in a nutshell.
So, we need to shut them down.
I'm happy to meet with them anytime.
Where were we putting those? I forget where I was filing those.